We'll go ahead and call this regular meeting of the city council to order this Tuesday, November the first, 2016. I'm no longer contagious, but I was sick this last week and I'm gonna hope to get through this without any coughing and sniffing tonight. I don't look that sick, right? Uh... Uh... Kevin Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Metina?
Here.
Councilmember Barlet?
Here.
Councilmember Sheehan?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mr. Spillman?
Here. Thank you. Tonight, if there's anyone that would like to speak on anything, if you haven't already turned in a sheet, if you'd like to speak on anything that's not on our agenda tonight, please fill out one of the forms on the back table and turn that into the city clerk while we do a couple other items here. And you can get a few minutes up here to talk to us about something that's not on our agenda tonight. Just keep in mind that we can't come to a consensus or really discuss that item if it's not on our agenda, but you've got us cornered, so come up here and talk to us, if you'd like. Those forms are on the back table back there. I see someone back there right now. See? Tonight, I'd like to see if I can corner Doug Reiter to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doug, again, 1.8 million thank yous. Next up, do we have any urgency items tonight, Kevin? Okay. With no urgency items, I would look to maybe see if we have an acceptance of the agenda, a motion for that.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the agenda. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next up, we have our consent agenda tonight, which is composed of A, ordinances waived except for reading of title, Item B, which is approved the regular minutes of the city council meeting of October 18th, 2016, and the special council meeting of October 25th, 2016, Item C, which is approved the warrant register for October 26th, 2016, Item D, which is approved application 2017-001 for the 2017 Home Wine and Beer Makers event to be held June 17th, 2017, in Library Park. We have Item E, which is approved application 2017-003, excuse me, with staff recommendations for the annual child festival in the park to be held April 22nd, 2017, Library Park again. Item F, which is approved and authorized city manager to execute the First Amendment to the professional services agreement with JJACAP Incorporated for Independent Audit Services. And then it looks like we have a mystery Item G on there, which might be like an open ticket to do anything we want.
Yeah.
We'll scratch Item G, I assume.
Yes.
So we have Items A through F for the public. We will vote on these at one time without any discussion. Any councilperson can pull any of these items for discussion that they would like, and I will open it up to the public at this time to see, or actually after, we see if anything needs to be pulled to make sure that nobody would like to discuss any of these items. Are there any councilmembers that would like to pull any of these for discussion? Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to discuss Items A through F that we will be voting on? Okay. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion, possible motion for the consent agenda.
But Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda, Items A through F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Or just like breezing right through our agenda, our consent agenda, or just rocking tonight? Next up, um... There we go. Next up would be Item 5, which would be, first thing would be citizen input. And we have one here, and I believe we had another one. I'll take them in the order that I got them. Ken, usually we hold everyone to three minutes, so I'm gonna give you five minutes.
Well, I submitted a letter to you.
I see that. And I'm just...
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay. Did you wanna just read through that real quick, or anything that you wanted to highlight?
No, you can read through it if you...
Okay.
But if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Did anyone have any questions for Ken at this time?
But I'm not sure I could do it.
Well, we don't...
We don't have any.
We don't have the letter, and we wouldn't be able to ask any questions at this point anyhow.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I've got that here that you turned in. What I'll do is...
Would you like to go over? You know, I mean, I'm not sure I can do it in five minutes.
Would you like to just read through exactly what's on the bullet points on that?
Okay.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead and just read through the...
I'll read the whole thing.
Yeah, just read through the bullet points there that you put on there.
Okay. I'm asking the City, the Lakeport City Council, to direct the city staff to help and assist me in getting the following issues on the November 15th, 2016 agenda for discussion. One of the items, I'm requesting all communication from the city council, the city manager, city and non-city staff concerning the 16th Street storm drain issues, including public documents from February 2014 to the current date. Another one is the city personnel policy for citizens to report employee conduct. Another one is from the mayor. I am requesting all communication concerning possible conflict of interest and code violations on the Third Street property. Do you know which property that is?
I do.
Another one is the Brown Act issues, and another one is conflict of interest report issues, and another one is access to public documents. Another one is access to meet or talk with city staff. Another one is councilmember duties, responsibilities, and what is expected of them. Another one is the councilmembers' communication with citizens, and another one is the city policy regarding returning phone calls.
What I will do is, we will take this, and I will make sure that everyone has a copy of that, which is okay. I will make sure that there's copies made for each of the councilpeople and for staff, and we will go from there. Like I said, we can't discuss it or come to a consensus on any of these items tonight, but I'll receive this, and I'll make copies and make sure that it gets distributed, and we will address this.
Okay. And if I don't hear something in a few days, who do I contact?
I would talk to, um... I was gonna say Kenny, but I'm not gonna do that to him. I know that you've dealt with Kenny, but I would contact me.
It's probably the same manager.
Well, yeah, you can contact me and the city manager both. I have no issue with that.
Well, you're kinda hard to contact, and your communication with me in this current year since February...
Well, yeah, you don't have an email, correct? You don't email.
So to contact you, I'm not sure that's a good idea, because you have failed to communicate with me since February of this year.
Yeah, there was, there was only two of us at the most that could deal with this.
Well, we're talking about you.
Yeah.
I think probably the same manager is the appropriate person to interface.
Yeah, especially if there's no email contact.
Okay. Well, I wanna know if she's gonna return phone calls if I leave a message, because she hasn't returned any of my phone calls.
Okay. All right. We will address it.
Are you telling me that she will return a phone call?
I will speak to her personally about it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have Jack McCormick.
Yes.
Did I pronounce that correctly?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I couldn't tell if that was a K at the end. Just gotta make sure.
Sorry, I haven't been here for a long time, so I don't get a chance. I gotta cook tonight, so...
Well, welcome.
I have the gaslight, rest it. We've gone over, I've talked to Martin and a few other people about parking of one of our vendors, and now they have four vehicles that have been parking on the street the time, which is for our customers, not for, you know... And he's been violating this problem, and even right now, his van's sitting up on Second Street, sitting there, and he'll leave it there for weeks during the construction of your sidewalks, which are beautiful looking now, we've gotten done. But they're out there, he had it there for over a month or more, spider web's coming off of it. And he, we have an agreement here on parking vehicles that Al and I had one vehicle on, not on a main street, but on the side street, for two hours for 72 hours, and you had it rotated, only one vehicle. He's violated having two vehicles. Now, we have, his son has a car, and we have a delivery vehicle, which today I put a tag on saying this is two-hour parking, parked outright in front there, and it's been there since Sunday. They did move it, but this is the problem, Al, I mean, we don't have a person who's out there ticketing, but this person keeps on parking their vehicles, and I mean, not just for a day or two, Bill Lewis complained to me about the park in front of his place and leaving there for three days or more. And I mean, this is the thing that need, I figured it's your problem, you should be able to contact them and say, what's the, you know, the rules, and what you should go by. I mean, if we're gonna have two-hour parking, it's gotta be abided. I mean, you're not gonna enforce it, take the signs down, but we're not enforcing, we have nobody to do it. And I talked to the chief here, I said, you should raise the price up from $38 to $50 a parking, I think it might make a little difference. They put more into work there by the courthouse for parking. They come down on Main Street, but nine o'clock, there's nothing happening on nine o'clock. I said, come around 11:00, but we don't have any, but, I mean, I've been here 28 years. I was backing Rose, who's come out there, she'd come down through there twice a day. And I don't know how much money you make off, but I think you should be able to find a scenery where that might want to volunteer, it has to be a background of law or whatever. But I really appreciate it more.
Yeah, and sometimes it's not about making the money off, it is about making sure that things are handled in a...
Right. Because, you know, now, the places are all marked out, so it works out pretty fine.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just beautiful, that working out. So, I mean, I like to see something enforced, but I think somebody should comment that they can't go parking out there for that time period.
Okay.
And that's what I'm hearing, so, believe it or not.
Okay, well, Jack, I will have a conversation with the chief and with the city manager, and we'll see what we can do about that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Thanks, Jack. Sorry for not recognizing you, it's been a long time since I've, I gotta, I gotta tell the story. When I first moved into town, Jack's gaslight down there, everyone said, you gotta go down there and have a burger, can I go down there and have a burger, can I go down there and have a meal? And it wasn't open. We go down, and it wasn't open, and this went on for a couple of times, and finally we got to go in there, and then it's like we, you had a period there where you weren't open for regularly, right?
I always take care of family.
Oh, okay.
We reopened two years almost now.
Well, we still have people talking about how good it is, so... I guess you don't have to be open to have a good place. Thank you, Jack. All right. Next up, we have a Item B, which would be, we didn't have any other citizen input, correct? Okay. Next up, we have Item B, which would be a presentation from Jennifer Strong on the Canokdi Last meeting, I tricked you.
I know.
Trying to make you come up early.
That's okay. All right, so, let's see if I can keep them, I'm breaking this. Okay. Put it in there. All right. I was only here half an hour early, you would've thought I would've put this in there already. So I might need some help with this magic laptop.
Tell me you'll help me.
Just going in, check.
Doug, you're not gonna jump in there, are you?
Uh, yeah, no.
I bet you'll need a guy.
Doug was technically challenged with Jennifer.
Does this thing have a clicker? Or do I just use the enter?
Uh, there's a couple clickers up here for some.
All right, I can just use the enter.
Where's Dan when you need him?
We've got clickers, we don't know what they're gonna, they may start raising and lowering things, and, yeah.
Disco ball comes down.
You have to be under the age of, what, 30, to be able to figure this stuff out? Okay, and then this thing, I don't think is on yet.
It was.
Is it on? It turned, opened the...
The shutter's closed.
The shutter's closed?
Wow.
Hey, look at that. All right. Hmm. You guys can have me better than you tonight, right? Here, hold on. Can you see that all right? All right, good job, you're hired. Get this guy raised. All right. Okay, so I wanna thank you for having me back. For the record, my name is Jennifer Strong, and I'm a member of the Lakeport Rotary Club and also the ride director for the Canokdi Challenge Cycling A Bet. So I try to get out every couple of years to all of the board of supervisors in the city council meetings and just give an update on the event so that you all have an idea of what this is all about. So what I'm gonna do is, is give you a little bit of an update on how the ride went this year. It's always the first Saturday in October, and it's been on the first Saturday in October for 26 years now. It used to be on a Sunday way back when, and we moved it to a Saturday somewhere a long time ago. But it's always on the first Saturday of October, so this year it was on Saturday, October 1st, 2016. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of a background of the ride, a little bit of the history of how it came to be, and then also some of the information on this year's ride, including the ride demographics and some of the results from the event this year. So a little bit of historical perspective on it. The ride began in 1990, it was originally sponsored by the Lakeport Chamber of Commerce. Lakeport Rotary took over the ride in 2001, because it was somewhat of a big event to be putting on with all the other things its chamber has to do. At that time, the ridership was approximately 200 cyclists, and the highest rider count we had was in 2014, just over 800 cyclists is what we had at that high. The numbers the last couple of years have been a little bit lower than that for obvious reasons. You throw a valley fire in there a couple weeks before the 2015 ride, and then, of course, we had the Clayton Fire this year, and I'll talk a little bit more about this year in just a second. But as you can see, we've grown the ride significantly since the Lakeport Rotary took it over. And essentially, what we've done is, we've tried to make it a professional event. We've actually been recognized for that statewide. It's not just a bike ride anymore, it's actually a very well-known, pretty well-respected ride without, throughout the state with regards to other cycling events, so we're pretty proud of that. There are four routes with the ride. Just to kinda give you an idea of where those routes go, the 20-mile ride, everything starts and is based at the Skylark Shores Resort in Lakeport. Couple years ago, we moved it down because the bass tournaments were needing a little bit of extra space with regards to boat ramps and such. So the Skylark opened up their resort there, we actually take it over for about three days right there at the first weekend in October, and so everything is spaced, is based out of the Skylark. So number eight is the Skylark Shores. So the 20-mile, it actually heads up north on Lake Shore and then cuts out on Hill Road out through Scott Valley, back around to Lakeport, and then back to the Skylark. So that's the 20-mile. It's got a little bit of the hills in it, anybody who's ever ridden a bike out there on Hill Road out by the hospital, there's a little bit of climb, but it's a lot safer. The 20-mile route used to actually go to Kelseyville and back, but Soda Bay always kinda made us a little bit nervous, so we changed it to where it goes out through Scott Valley. The 40-mile, it takes the first, is that blurry, or is that just my eyes? My eyes maybe. The 40-mile actually picks up the first 20 miles of the 20-mile loop, and then it does go out to Kelseyville through Big Valley, through Finley, out to Kelseyville, and then back around again, so that's the 40-mile that it's there. Then we have the 65, and the 65 is probably what we're known the most for, because it's pretty unique. It actually encircles the entire lake, and anybody who's ever driven around the lake, it is a long flipping way, right? We'll try to imagine me getting on a bicycle and riding all the way around that thing. They absolutely love it. They get on their bicycles there, Skylark, and they head north, and they go all the way around the lake up through Sulphur Bank, through the city of Clear Lake, and then up Glasgow Grade to Point Lakeview Road to what they lovingly call the wall, which is Point Lakeview Road, goes straight down, straight up, straight down, straight up, and they think that's fun. And then around through by Canokdi and Soda Bay to Kelseyville and back to Lakeport. So this is kind of what we're, probably our flagship. We've been recognized for this ride statewide as being one of the best in the state, and it is pretty unique that there's an awful lot of right turns that eventually end up right back where you started. And of course, we have the 100-mile route, and again, why anybody would think this is fun is beyond me, but they go all the way around the lake, but then they head down to Middletown, go up and over the top of Cobb Mountain, and then back down to Highway 29, they hang a right, and they go back up the mountain, and then back down Red Hills Lane, and it's about 6,000 feet of elevation climb that they do. We had a group of cyclists this year that actually rode the 100-mile route for Cory, and they rode it without stopping, if you can imagine that. They rode the entire 100-mile route without stopping. But it was, it was good to get them back, our cyclists back up on Cobb. Obviously, in 2015, we pulled off that ride two days, two weeks after the valley fire, but we had to, obvious reasons, we had to cancel the 100-mile ride in 2015. So we got those cyclists back up on, on the mountain so that they could really see the regrowth and the rebuilding and the tenacity that our community has. And you'll see a lot of that in the survey results when I send that to you, that people appreciated being able to get back up there on Cobb Mountain. So those are the four routes that we have. Couple of interesting things about 2016, we had just around 600 cyclists, it's a pretty even split between men, male and female. 211 of those have never participated in our ride before. The reason that I include this statistic is, I'm a big information data person, I think that data is very, very powerful. Of those 211, most of those people had never been to Lake County before. So if we really look at, and Lakeport Rotary really looks at this event, and I'm hoping that the community looks at it this way, that we have the opportunity to really be good ambassadors of Lake County, and when we have the opportunity to, a couple hundred people here and their guests, so theoretically, you have four, sometimes more than that, people here that have never been to Lake County before, we have a true opportunity to shine for these folks, and that's something that we're really proud of being a part of. The minimum age of our cyclists this year was eight, the maximum age is 83. Something to note about that 83-year-old, he's been riding our ride for years, he rides the 100-mile ride every year. And so every year, our maximum age gets notched up one notch. I started this 11 years ago, I'm on year 11 of my three-year commitment to be the ride director of this. Be careful when you say yes, by the way. So it's been notching up, so he's kind of a neat guy, but he gets on that 100-mile route, and he does it at age 83, which is pretty cool. Average age of our cyclists is 53. 80% of all of our cyclists come from outside of Lake County. And again, I think that that's an important note, because even though nine states were represented this year by our cyclists, the majority of those cyclists are coming from within a three-hour radius of Lake County. That, to me, is huge. If you're looking at it from a branding and a demographic and who our ideal demographic is to have in this community, that's really kind of where we want, is those people that are from about three hours away, that don't hesitate to spend $10,000 or $12,000 on a bicycle, they have a really soft footprint while they're here, as you're gonna see here in a second, they like to do outdoor things, they're right in that ideal average age range that we're looking for, and we're really trying to bring these folks in and keep them here for the weekend and show them just what we get to see every single day. 362 of those cyclists were on the 100-mile route and 65-mile route. What I find important about that is, you've gotta remember that our ride goes through every single zip code in Lake County with the exception of two. I'm pretty sure it's the only event in Lake County that showcases the entire county, from the average of about 13 miles an hour on the seat of a bicycle. So when you've got 362 people seeing the entire county in a day, almost every single zip code in the county, that's something that's pretty special. So the majority of those are on the 65, that's kind of our favorite, but we do get a lot that are on the 100 as well. It brings in over 100 volunteers from the community, 14 different organizations also participate in this. This is not a Lakeport Rotary event, this is a, an event that is basically put on by Lakeport Rotary, but it's really a Lake County event. It's the city of Lakeport, it's the city of Clear Lake, it's the city of Finley, it's all of those little places and towns all around the county, because that's, that's what it is, this is a community event. And we've really tried to grow it into that. And then, as I mentioned, the zip code. Couple of other things here. Kenny up there fed almost 1,000 people through the after-ride barbecue this year, and a lot of those are guests, we get a lot of, we've worked really hard over the years to brand this as a weekend event to where people are not just coming up first thing in the morning and leaving at the end of the day, but they're coming in on Thursday or Friday, and they're staying until Monday. So we get a lot of guests that are coming with the cyclists. So Kenny and his crew do an amazing job of feeding all those folks. We gave out over $8,500 to local nonprofit organizations operating the rest stops, so a tremendous amount of any net profit that the, that Lakeport Rotary gets from this event, a big chunk of it goes right back into the community with the nonprofit organizations that run the rest stops. We also have the Girl Scouts that come and help out, the Interact Club, those help out as well. So we give a lot of that money back to the community right away. We were the recipient of the Cycle California Magazine 2015 Excellence in Service Award, and that was due for our work with the, with the ride two weeks after the valley fire last year. We gave over 200 bicycles away, and then, of course, Lakeport Rotary was the one who started the valley fire relief, the Rotary Fire Relief Fund, which has in turn turned into an entire Lake County Rotary Fire Relief Fund. That fund was actually started by Lakeport Rotary, and it's raised over $900,000 to date, and the Canokdi Challenge was one of the instigators of that, the beginnings of that fund. So we were recognized by Cycle California Magazine for that. We were also awarded the Best Metric Century Award in 2014. The voting is open for 2016, so if you go to our Facebook page, which is Canokdi Challenge LC, I would encourage you to go and vote for the Canokdi Challenge ride, because we do get statewide recognition when we receive those awards. So even if you didn't ride it, please go and vote. Nearly every hotel room in Lake County was full, and basically, quite a few of those hotels are already completely booked up for the 2017 ride, and they were prior to the beginning of this ride. So it's really a huge boon to our economy, it brings in an unimaginable amount of money to this community during a little bit of the off-season for us, you know, it's kind of right before, during crush, but it's after the major summer time. So to be able to fill up all of the Lake County lodging and restaurants, that's, that's something that I think is, that we should all be proud of. We also did our second year of the Friday night wine tasting. We had over 200 participants in that that showed up on Friday night at the Skylark to pick up their packets, and we had over 15 wineries that participated. Next year, we're hoping to have quite a few more. And also, we're gonna try, we kinda tried this year, but it was, it was a little tough, but we're gonna try to get some of the local restaurants around the county that would like to bring some little giveaway appetizers and some sample menus, because these people are looking for places to go to dinner on Friday night and Sunday, et cetera. So that's really kind of growing in interest, but it's our opportunity to be able to showcase our Lake County wines to these people that are from outside of the area. And if you read the survey results, you'll find that a lot of these people are going out on Sunday and joining wine clubs and buying wine, and that's really the whole idea, is to get these people, we've got this captive audience, right? So we wanna make sure that we capitalize upon it. These are some of the organizations that participated in the event this year, and, you know, it's, our rest stop competition is another thing that we're kind of known for, they theme up their, their rest stops and make it a lot of fun for the cyclists, and that's become kind of a gold standard in the world of cycling events. It's actually been copied, and there's no better form of flattery than to be copied. There's some other rides out there that are actually, that are starting to do some of those things right now. This is something, again, I'm a big data person, this is, we track where people hear about the ride from. And these are all, you know, a whole slew of different places that we have, we have, we have a lot of exposure out there and presence at, you know, we're all over the web, we're all over, you know, Cycle California Mag, we're, we're in all sorts of different places. But the thing that I think that's most important about this data right here is the very first line, that over 40% of our cyclists hear about the ride from a friend. Those of you who have done any type of branding or marketing know and understand that you can put full-page ads and pay a lot of money for them in the San Francisco Chronicle and the Examiner, but there's absolutely no better way to build your brand than to have people talking about it. And that number is pretty consistent from year to year, that the majority of our cyclists hear about us through, through a friend. You've gotta have all of those other things in order to be able to have that drip mentality and to kind of continue to drip on their, their brain a little bit, but having that and to kind of continue to drip on their brain a little bit, but having that huge of a number with regards to hearing about our ride through a friend is something that I think is really, really important, because that means that they're not only talking about Conocti Challenge, they're also talking about Lake County. Okay, a couple of more things, this is another thing that I, this is probably one of my favorite parts of our ride, is getting these surveys back. I've learned, I was telling Chief back there, that I have fairly thin skin, but I've learned to develop a bit of a thicker skin with regards to surveys and not want to respond to every single thing that was incorrect. But one of the things I will say about our cyclists is that when they're asked to do something, they do it. And anybody who's ever done a survey, you know that if you get a 2% response rate on a survey, that's a pretty doggone good response rate, right? Well, we mailed out 520 surveys, why not 600? Because some people don't have email addresses, or, you know, for whatever reason, they don't participate in them. 253 of those, that's almost a 50% response rate. I'm actually a little disappointed in that number, I usually get up around an 80 to an 85% response rate, but I had some turnover with employees, and so I wasn't able to Chinese Water Torture them as much as I normally do. But still, a 50% response rate on surveys are pretty good. I'm going to be emailing this to Margaret, and she'll be sending it to you. These are, and anybody who is interested in reading these survey results are more than welcome. It's 48 pages long, about 8-point type, just said it, and those are the results. I very much encourage them to not just give us a rating, but to tell us why they rated it, and so they do. And there's an incredible amount of very valuable data in there, and information in there, from everything from roads to the hotels, to the restaurants, to you name it, you know, they're commenting on there. So there's some pretty valuable information in there. A couple of things that come out of that, over half of these folks stayed in local lodging. Some of the things that they did while they were here, almost half participated in Oktoberfest, we really pushed sponsoring, sponsorship, the quilt show, restaurants, 80% of them died in a local restaurant, visited wineries, went shopping, you know, they're doing things and they're spending money while they're here. And I believe that that's what we all want, right? That drives these folks coming back. Here's another question that I ask them, and then I'll show you a few pictures, and then I'll be done. One of the last questions that I ask them is, what are some things that you would like to do while you're here? Now, I'm sort of a believer that if you build it, they will come, right? I've also learned over the years that I can't build everything, even though I sometimes think I can and want to try. But I can't build everything, and you can see, there is a resounding desire to do some of these things. I try every year to get somebody to put something together, all I need is a PDF document, charge whatever you want to charge, I'll advertise it, these people will sign up, and you'll be able to capture them within these various things here. But there's a huge interest in getting out and doing more things while they're here in Lake County, and if you get them out and do more things, that whole cross-sell ratio thing, the more items that you can cross-sell to one person, the more apt they are to stay out and stay. I believe the more apt that they are to come back during other times of the year. So I would encourage any of you in this room that's listening to this, if you know of people that have the ability to put these types of things together, all I need is a PDF, charge whatever you want, I'll make sure that it gets advertised to these cyclists, and we'll get some people signed up to do some of these things, but there's a huge desire for that. A few of the comments that I pulled out of the survey. The wine tasting at the registration was really nice, the servers were nice and friendly, found a wine I liked very much, and visited the winery after the bike ride, made a large purchase, and made sure I let them know that I was from KC, I loved it so much, I joined their wine club. We enjoyed the wine tasting party on Friday afternoon at the registration, our group of 27 then went to dinner at TNT, these guys are from Port Bragg. Then on Sunday, we sought out a couple of the wineries serving at the party, bought some of their product, the Olaf Winery is a must-visit, the Boutique Winery wasn't represented, but it was a great facility. Chasing down the wineries in your area was a fun and beautiful experience. There were some really nice booths at Oktoberfest, I bought a couple of yard art plate stands that were innovative, also had a great Friday night dinner at the Sashop with our party of 16. We always come to Lakeport for the ride, and we take advantage of our visit to go to the Oktoberfest, local restaurants, the bike shop, the used bookstore, and the local wineries with the best in the vacation. So just a few, just to kind of give you an idea of what these people are doing. Just a couple of the branding things that we do, we put together 12,000 professionally-done full-color brochures, they get scattered around all over everywhere. I have over 3,000 clean email addresses. I get an open rate on my emails between 40 and 70%, because I try to be funny when I write them, so that they'll open them and read them, so I have to be in the right mood when I write them. But I use Constant Contact, so I can see what the open rate is, the click-throughs, what they're clicking on, what days of the week are best, but there's a huge, those are all of our past cyclists, by the way. We have our website, our Facebook page, and then we also do some advertisements in Cycle California Magazine as well. So there's a lot of Lake County branding that's going on with that. Just a few pictures, I'll flip through these pretty quickly, it just sort of gives you a little bit of a feel of what the event is. We feed them a lot, we like to say that we are the only ride out there where you can ride 100 miles and gain weight. We're feeding them about every 10 miles or so, and then Kenny finishes them off at the end of the day, and of course, Girl Scouts with a bunch of ice cream bars really finish them off by the end of the day. But here's some of our rest stops, this was the Middletown Mountain Biking Club, some of the pictures are kind of hard to see, but they decorate up their stops, as you can see, some of them, as people services down Clear Lake, they do an amazing job, they bring out all the stops, massage therapists, this was actually a cyclist getting a massage at a rest stop, so much for it being competitive then, just not, you can see we feed them, we feed them some more. The Clear Lake Explorer Post, CHP Explorer Post, they turned Jellystone Park into a Hawaiian party. So you can see, they really have a lot of fun, and of course, we see them more, we make sure they get quite a lot of beer and wine along the way. The Girl Scouts do a great job, they're prevalent, and of course, these are a couple of our road cyclists, some of you may recognize them. They're not supposed to do this, but they stopped at a winery on their way back. Like, I don't want to hear this, but I thought it was a good picture. They love having pictures, having their pictures taken with the mountain and the lake in the background, and, you know, of course, they're just having a really great time. And I can't imagine a more beautiful location to be doing this than sitting right there on the lake with this volcano in the background, you know, on a beautiful day. And this was the wine tasting, it was a cold blustery Friday afternoon, these people still came out and drank a lot of wine, and they had just a great time. And we do it, nice professional glasses that say Conocti Challenge on them, these are some cyclists that were getting their glasses. And of course, you know, they're having a great time. We don't advocate writing without hands, but Chris Mo thought that was the thing to do, and I just love that picture. There's our website and our Facebook, I would encourage you to go like our Facebook page, and then the date for next year, it's always the first Saturday, October 7, 2017. I will tell you that those six events that we had on the ride date this year is going to be down to three, so we're hoping that it will be a little bit less crowded on our date. Any questions? Happy, pretty much all of you guys are fine in the ride.
Actually, I just wanted to say, I've never done the 65, like I said, my brother and sister-in-law come down every year to do it. They talk about that whoop-de-doo, it's the turnoff at Jango Bay after you take that ride. They've talked about that. I've done the 100, but I apparently have to do the 65 next year, because they won't do 100 anymore, so.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Well, I just, I personally want to thank the city, you know, the city of Clear Lake was also very helpful, you know, Chief Rossman, we wouldn't be able to do this event without all of the support. I will tell you that in the cycling community, our ride, from a community support level, they just, they are amazed at how easy all of our governments and law enforcement are to work with. So that's a true testament to the city and the police departments and the counties, et cetera. So we thank you for that, you know, we continue to try to bring this in and make it a bigger and better, you know, showcase of Lake County, but we couldn't do it without your support, so thank you. And I'll get this survey emailed out to you, if anybody else is interested in it, it's open in public.
You know, there's an interesting, Mr. Mayor, story on this one, that the Conocti Challenge has become so popular that a young man that was riding in a Napa County ride, started in Yountville, ended up finishing at the Skylark in Lakeport.
Took a wrong turn.
Was probably pretty shocked when he crossed the finish line and saw Mount Conocti in the lake, which does not exist in Napa County, and took a wrong turn, came over Mount Saint Helena, and then proceeded to climb another mountain over Cobb Mountain, and joined the 100-milers before he got back into Lakeport. Luckily, he got a ride home, didn't have to ride back. So of course, we fed him well and told him that obviously he should come visit us next year.
That was a great story. He kept asking cyclists, he'd ride along and he'd go, "Is I'm almost to Yountville?" And they're laughing, going, "Yeah, Yountville's just right up ahead." They thought he was kidding.
Yeah, they thought he was having fun, yeah.
So thank you for your time, I know that went a little bit long, but I really do appreciate all this support that you guys give us.
I might recommend that you take your 83-year-old and start sponsoring him here in the next few years to make sure that he keeps showing up.
Exactly, yeah, he's a great guy, so thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Senator.
All right, next up, we have item number six tonight, which would be our public hearing, which is item A, the Speed Zone Ordinance, adopt a ordinance revising Chapter 10.16 of Lakeport Municipal Code regarding speed zones within the city, and... Is this Kenny?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start, Mr. Mayor, make sure there's other staff members that'll jump in. But essentially, just a quick overview of how we get to this point with the adoption of the Speed Zone Study and how that establishes our speed limits here in the city of Lakeport. Essentially, the California Vehicle Code requires that speed zones be justified by an engineering and traffic survey every five years. Phil Dow from Dow and Associates with our regional transportation body is also here, he's the one that conducted the Speed Zone Study. He's conducted, what, the past three or four Speed Zone Studies?
Four or five.
I won't put him on the spot there, but he's done the past several for the city as well, so he's quite intimate with all of our different road conditions and factors that lead into this. The study essentially is recommending five specific areas where changes are recommended, the first being Bevan Street from Lakeport Boulevard to Bevan's Court, Hartley Street from 20th Streets to the northern city limits, and then Martin Street from Bevan Street to the western city limits, parallel drive from the old city limits near Chester Avenue to Lakeport Boulevard, and then 20th Street from Alden Avenue to Hartley Street. Since our introduction of this ordinance at our last public meeting, several city staff members, and I know the council as well, have had some conversations specifically with some of the neighbors in the 20th Street area with concerns over the Speed Zone Studies recommendation to increase the speed zone from 25 to 30 in that area. So that's a particular concern, I'm sure a number of them are going to speak on that tonight, and that's why we kind of invited Phil back to kind of give some of the specifics of how this data is derived and what the consequences are if we don't, if we go through with the recommendation versus if we choose to ignore those recommendations. So that's it, I know the chief probably has a few things he can add to it, Doug's also here with Public Works to add his pieces there as well, but we'll go ahead and turn it over to you for the public hearing.
Okay. Chief, did you want to weigh in yet? Or did you want to?
Well, I'm prepared to answer questions about enforcement and how all that works, so I figured I would be available for those if anyone has those now or afterwards.
Okay. Don, you got anything first before we open it up for the council?
More like Brad, I'm just really here for, you know, council or the public, should have any questions, I could try to answer.
Okay. Then to council, any questions for your staff to begin with, before we open it up to the public?
Well, we have Phil come up and explain again.
Okay, at this time, can, Phil, can I have you come up? And I know there's going to be people here that were not here at the last presentation, and hate to have you kind of capsulize everything again, but maybe go through it as best as you can to fill in the people that were not here at the last public meeting.
Sure.
Okay, thanks, Phil.
Again, my name is Phil Dow, and I'm under contract with the Area Planning Council, and we have certain work items in the work program that we perform in Lake County, and for the past 30, maybe 35 years, the Speed Zone Studies have been one of the things we routinely do out of the work program for not only Lakeport, but the city of Clear Lake and the county itself. I think that Mr. Ingram gave a fairly good introduction of what this is all about, and I want to, unfortunately, I think I need to repeat some things, but according to the California Vehicle Code, if an entity such as a city or a county wants to establish speed limits within their jurisdiction and maintain those speed limits, they have to be pretty much justified every five years by means of a traffic and engineering study. The methodology of how to do the traffic and engineering study is shown actually in the Vehicle Code, and it was developed by Caltrans many, many years ago. Essentially, what it is, is an evaluation of what the prevailing speeds on streets currently are, what prevailing speeds are, as monitored by things such as road toads or radar, to get a representative sample, which is at least 100 vehicles, but in every case, when I do it, we usually get hundreds and maybe thousands of actuation students, so we can, we have a pretty good idea that what we're monitoring is pretty well direct. What we then look at is the 85th percentile of the speeds, recognizing that not everybody is going to be compliant, and you look at what the 85th percentile is, and then if other major factors aren't present, that's where you start off with, with establishing a speed zone. And it's been, you know, I asked this question many, many years ago, and the 85th percentile was established after looking at thousands and thousands and thousands of studies with the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and they decided that's probably the best way to start these studies, is looking at the 85th percentile. It doesn't necessarily end there when you start there, and you look and see if there are any reported accidents that would cause you to vary from that 85th percentile, and you also look at the conditions of the street, the roadway, to see if there's any conditions that are, quote, "not readily apparent to the reasonable and prudent driver." That means anything that's hidden, things that you should foresee coming are not included in that definition of not foreseeable to the reasonable and prudent driver. You put this all together and make the recommendations, so you kind of start with the 85th percentile is, and if there are reasons why you can feel uncomfortable with it, and there's an accident record or other reasons why the traffic engineer has to lower the speed, you can use professional judgment. Yeah, I mean, lower the speed, and I'm talking about the recommended speed limit. That has changed significantly, and it did in 2009, whereas the guidelines established by the State Traffic Control Device Committee tightened up how you actually round off the 85th percentile speeds, and it tightened up the latitude that any professional can have, and said you can only vary it from the 85th percentile by five miles per hour and that's it, and you have to put those reasons in writing in the report and the recommendations that you're giving to the recommended body. So in the, since the last time I did this, those recommendations just came out, and it wasn't fully clear how to implement these things, and I probably took more latitude in the recommendations than I should have last time, but this time, it was very clear that I really had no latitude, they took any kind of professional judgment away. So I had to give you what the procedures dictated as a recommendation, and as I told you last time, the recommendations in establishing speed zones permit the local authority to monitor and to enforce with electronic means. If you weren't using electronic means such as radar or lidar now, you don't have to do these types of studies, but they have to be enforced, and this comes under the definition of the speed trap in the California Vehicle Code, and this has been in existence since 1972. And it's unfortunate that we were dictated so tightly by the laws and the methodology now on what has to be done, but the, this is what came out of the study, and I think there's 32 different segments or streets or segments of streets were recommended. I am not surprised that 20th Street came to the public attention, because it is a residential street. Unfortunately, it's a wide residential street with a big gap in development, and as I told the council last time, it doesn't matter what speed limit sign you elect to put up initially, people are going to drive according to the conditions of the roadway and the traffic conditions. And you have a wide street, and particularly a wide street with no development for probably about a quarter of a mile or so, it's prone to having higher speeds than we'd like, and probably most of the public would like. And it really isn't anything, as far as recommendations I can give you, in following the law, as far as a recommendation, other than lowering it to 35 miles an hour, which is justified in the study. Maximizing the latitude, I have to recommend a 30, while, as we all know, it's currently zoned at 25. That's the conditions on 20th Street, and if the council recalls, we had a similar situation, not on a residential street, on a commercial in neighborhoods five years ago, when I presented the 2011 version. And one of the things I tried to point out to the council was something that I told the council at that time, that the recommendations for Main Street and South Main Street in 2011 were to raise it from 25 miles an hour to 30. And I told, I remember telling the council at the time, or different people here now, but I doubted it's going to make a difference regarding prevailing speeds. People were going to drive according to the conditions. And I suspected that it wasn't going to make one bit of difference other than make it easier for enforcement because instead of having everybody breaking the law, you can really pick out the ones who are exceeding it and have to stand up in court. So I just wanted to review the speeds on North Main Street and South Main Street from 2011. Were the 85th percentile at various segments were 30, 29, 32, 39, 39, and 40. Those were clearly much higher than would be indicated by doing the Speed Zone Study. So we raised it up to, we raised it up to, from the 25 mile an hour zones up to 30. Excuse me, I read, I read too far down my list. Those ones that were at 39 and 40 were in the 35 mile an hour zone. And in the segments where we had a 25, the actually, the prevailing speeds at three different locations. 2011 it was 30. After raising it to 30 miles an hour, 2016 I monitored 30. 2011 I monitored a 29, another segment. 2016, 28. The third segment monitored in 2011 was 32 miles an hour and it reduced to 30 miles an hour five years later. That's the way I had hoped it would work and it worked that way. So the thing for the council and the public to understand is that the signs, the sign you put on any speed limit is fairly ineffective. It takes enforcement. And if you don't have the proper speed, it's septic in the conditions of the roadway and the prevailing speeds of the roadway, they're going to ignore it. So I suspect whether it's 25 mile an hour or whether it raised to 30, I think the prevailing speed will remain the same. It's just an enforcement issue. And once again, you have recommendations out of all of these and because of this change in guidance, for the first time I put a special section in here highlighting those five changes where they were recommended the speeds to be elevated and along with some mitigations on how to make it better. There's no mitigation I can come up with with 20th Street. And I'm not surprised that there are people here that are concerned that this is going to mean an increase in speeds. And all I can do is tell them I have presented you some evidence from five years ago and just a couple of weeks ago that shows that that's not necessarily the case. In fact, some of these actually dropped. What I've found in, you know, I've been doing these things for, well, in this county for 35 years and professionally off and on for 40 years. And it's kind of amazing that when you give the traveling public a speed limit that they feel like is reasonable, they'll seek to achieve it. I remember doing one in Reno early on where the speeds were along a particular busy street were 45 miles an hour. It was zoned at like 35. We raised it to 45 and hardly anybody went over it. A lot of the prevailing speeds actually came down to be the actual speed limit because it was deemed by the traveling public to be a reasonable speed. So that's the theory. I know it's hard to accept for some people, but it really works that way. And I am bound by law and my traffic engineering license to present to you the way that the state laid it out to perform and these studies and the way it needs to be presented for you for possible action. Certainly the local jurisdiction has a latitude to reject any or all of this and do what you want. And I'm just emphasizing one more time that as far as affecting the prevailing speeds, unless there's more development around 20th Street and the drivers get more of a closed in feeling and, or some, or some, the city wanted to put a road diet on that street like you're doing downtown, that will calm the traffic and make people drive, drive at a lower speed. And since that particular street really goes to nowhere but residential areas, some of the, some of the neighbors are out there or wants to actually elevate the speed. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Phil. Counselor?
Well, I think that we have the benefit of having heard this last time and I think that the presumption of most people in the public is, is that if you have a speed limit at 25 and you raise it to 30, then people are naturally going to drive faster because the speed limit's now 30. But what you have done and engineers throughout history in recent 25 to 35 years is that you put the signs up based on what they're already driving and they have to fit the driving patterns of a reasonable and prudent driver so that you can't develop a speed trap. And so your whole predication is based on the fact that this is what they're driving. You have evidence on South Main that you did numerous different locations, three of them I think, and in one or two of them they actually went down because they are driving based on the road conditions, not based on the signs. And I think that the average person saying, oh my God, you know, we've got these kids out here, they're going to raise it to 30, so everybody's going to go 35. But you have proof, evidence from years and years of practice as an engineer and that is not the case. And that's what you told us last time. And the other people that heard this are presuming that, hey, if you raise it by five miles an hour, they're going to be going faster and there's going to be accidents and all that. And the other element is there's no accidents and that's a major factor. And if there were accidents, then you would reexamine the conditions. But they don't realize that in other locations, you've got the slope, you've got the angle, you've got the hidden areas and you do an incredibly detailed report and all this stuff. And I think it's just natural that they would think that since you're moving it up five miles an hour, it's going to go up five miles an hour, but that is not the case. Correct?
Counselor, maybe you should have started this. One thing you may hear is that people will say there are accidents out there. And I mean, every time I do, and you hear this before, there's fender benders and people will leave without reporting any damage. It happens everywhere. The only thing we can go on as far as accidents is through the CHP reports, which your police office, they handle that and send it on the CHP. Eventually, we find that on Switters, which is a handy little name for the statewide integrated traffic record system. That's why they call it Switters. And find the accidents, but the only ones that are reported and obviously, since it happens everywhere, the non-reported accidents, we have to rely on reported accidents and the more serious ones are reported, including all the injuries, obviously. Very well done, Counselor.
Phil, they're 40 feet wide on 20th. That's curb to curb.
Uh, where did you get that from?
Page 33, attachment 3.
That's something that I measure, yeah.
So we'd assume that the travelway then with cars parked on both sides is 20 feet. Is that taken into account?
Well, the roadway width is one thing, but you know, I think the prevailing factor in there is that you have a lot of that road where there's, there's no roadside parking because there's no development. I think that contributes, you know, down at the...
Well, it's still, the parking is still there.
Only on part of it.
Well, the stretch without any housing?
There's still parking.
Yeah.
Not very much.
There would be nobody parking.
There's no parking pass of those houses that are directly on the street.
Okay.
No reason for anybody to park there. And that's what's contributing to the elevation of speeds.
Okay, so that would be from Alden. Not all the way to Hartley though. That would be Alden for, what, two blocks?
Yeah.
Yeah. But the width of the street and you're kind of making a determination of, well, if I go according to the guidance that's been established by Caltrans, is to be applicable to all, all local jurisdictions as well. You kind of, what you try to do is coordinate, particularly in areas like this, changes in speeds to the width of the roadway or curbage or anything else. And so that's why I recommended keeping the 25 miles per hour zone, stopping at the 30 miles an hour at Willow View because the roadway becomes substantially smaller, the width becomes smaller at that point, the other side of the intersection, and it starts curbing up into the Hilly neighborhoods. So the recommendation is to keep that segment at 25.
Sure. And really, this still goes back to my concern that understandably that there's that two block area where the, kind of the petticoat, pagoda style house exists with that large property across from it, or many vacant lots, but, but just to the east of that, you know, the roadway really isn't 40 feet wide because there are cars parked there on both sides.
The roadway is 40 feet wide.
The roadway is, but the travelable lanes really are only 20 feet.
Yeah.
And that is true. But...
And you're not allowed to take that into consideration?
No.
I think that...
That seems like that's a...
The thing that seems to me is that if you had, let's say there were soccer fields there nearby where this large area is where there's nobody parking and on average there was cars there and it reduced the roadway, then I think you would have the commensurate reduction in the amount of speed and then you would have a reduction. But since there's nobody there now, the prevailing speed for a safer prudent driver is what it is. And that's why you predicated your speed on that and it's not going to change. But I understand what Marty's saying, further down, there are cars there, but they're still going the prevailing speed. And the idea is if they're going the prevailing speed and you lower it, then you're enabling law enforcement to say, hey, it's 25, they're going 30. So we can ticket them. And you're saying that by law, you can't do that if the prevailing speed is day in and day out, thousands of cars, 85th percentile is 30 miles an hour, you cannot have a 25 mile an hour speed limit legally.
It's actually 36 though, right?
The prevailing speed is 36 miles an hour.
Yes, the...
Yeah. It's high. Because that's the 85th percentile actually.
The 85th percentile is 36. You round down to the nearest five or if it were 38 miles an hour and I have to round it up to 40. Then you can use what little professional judgment that you have left to find some factor in there. So this is what you're talking about, that while there is some pretty tight residential area going to park to justify bringing it down to the recommended 30. Otherwise, I'd be recommending, I'd have to recommend a 35. And it's now 25.
So it's round, we're already rounding it down.
No, I understand that. I'm, you know, there's no, I have a complete understanding of that. Legally, you have to say 30. That's the best you can do.
With latitude.
What, without, without legalities involved, in your opinion, what should the speed limit be on those sections where cars are parked on both sides? Without your professional license, without the state of California, in your experience?
I'm kind of aware of the people who live here.
Dogs and cats and kids.
But I, my...
I know where you are, Phil, I completely understand where you are. Legally, I don't like you so much.
Forty years of experience tells me and, and that they're going to drive according to the conditions and if you keep it at 25, I can go out there next week with a radar gun and show you that the 85th percentile is going to be around 35, 36, maybe 37 miles an hour. It's not going to make any difference. And if you give people a reasonable speed, usually they'll attempt to provide any conditions that are the same, attempt to comply with it. And what this is, is an enforcement issue. And I've talked to the chief about that and I know there's plenty of reasons to be uncomfortable about it. I was uncomfortable when I wrote this because I knew that people would be upset because I wouldn't want a residential street in my area to promote higher speeds on my street. I just seriously doubted what happened. But first, you know, this is, this is counterintuitive and that's why I concluded my presentation last week of showing you that, hey, we raised the speed limits on Main Street five years ago and what I told you that I thought would happen, happened. It didn't make any difference. People were going the same speeds. But you can really separate out, separate out the ones who were definitely going far above this speed limit according to the law and ticket those people.
So the way I understand it, if, the big thing, the gripe would be if I were living down there and you had it at 25 and there's people going 36 right now, I should be leaning on the, on the chief saying, why aren't you enforcing the speed limit? And if he did enforce it and then they, someone went into court and said, yeah, well, I want to see the traffic study and they show that it's 36, this would be a moot point because they would be, would be thrown out. And I think you pointed that out at the last meeting.
Now everybody in Lakeport knows it. Yeah, but that is the truth. And there are educated people who know and want to get a ticket. They need to make sure that it's substantiated within the last five years by one of these speed studies anywhere. Otherwise, it will be thrown out automatically.
Phil, do we have the option to segment it further, to have 25 miles per hour, say up to Mellor than from Mellor to Willow View? Is there any particular reason why we have to go from the beginning all the way up to Willow View? Because I've, I've driven 20th Street and in fact, this week I was practicing the different speeds to see where I felt comfortable. And recently, this neighborhood has increased significantly in the number of children that are up and down the street all the time. I mean, I know we've had a historical problem with, with cats and animals, but if we have, if we have this limitation regarding that empty subdivision area, can we, what can we do to compensate for that? There has to be something because going even 30 miles an hour makes me really uncomfortable in that stretch because you're right, we've got trucks and boats and all kinds of things on either side. It's kind of like you're in a shoot. And if a kid was to run out, there's no way you'd see it in time if you're flying, you know, even going 30 miles an hour.
I think the, you know, most of the residences are very close to that intersection and part of what you have to do is take the studies that are not influenced by any traffic control devices, it has to be a reasonable distance back from that stop sign because you're, you have to measure what people will naturally drive the roadway. So can't, I can't take it too close to the stop sign where, where most of the residences are, but there is, we could look at segmenting that, I guess. I don't know how.
If we could segment it to Mellor, that would sort of encapsulize the area that makes people drive faster. And then we could improve the signage, letting them notify you are now getting into a more densely residential area, slow the heck down so you don't kill somebody. So if we could look into segmenting it, I think that that might be an option where we could at least minimize the impact along with hopefully increased surveillance and ticketing. How would we go about doing something like that?
Wait for me.
Okay.
All right, I can, I can take a look at it. Your other options are removing any speed zoning signs from that street and are planning residential streets without a speed zone sign on them. Or keeping with the 25 and rendering it unenforceable.
Okay, so what benefit would removing all the signs do?
Well, people are seeing that it's a 25 because it's residential. Right. So that's okay.
Even though the 25s up there now are not paying attention to them.
Right.
Maybe we should go ahead and open the public hearing.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I did the same thing. I took my, I didn't tell them why we were going over there, but I told my 27-year-old that he'd take something over to a family friend that lives down at the end of 20th, past that long stretch of emptiness on the south side. And he was driving and I figured it was easier than me going out there driving. And he was driving, and I figured it was easier than me going out there and driving. So coming back, he was doing about 32, 33. As he came in back into the residential area and being the passenger, I was uncomfortable. I was thinking the same thing. I was thinking, oh, please don't. I finally said, hey, hey, tone it down a little bit, you know, as we, you know, got into that stretch of housing. Because, you know, you do have vehicles along there, and you do see the potential for something to come out, and you just, you know, you just never want that to happen. And I kind of thought it was a better idea than going out there and driving it myself, you know, which you did several trips back and forth, so that's the way to do it sometimes, to see what's comfortable. But, and I kind of did it as a passenger just to see how it felt, so.
In further response to Councilmember Turner's suggestion, long ago, the limits of where the city decided to start posting the speed was established by someone even older than me. Because I have, over the time, like I said, I probably did seven of these for over a 35-year period for the city. And what I do is give what you give me. Here, here's the speed zone from here to here, and I go out and make a recommendation based on that. In this particular case, I have recommended changing a couple of those limits because I was concerned about those locations. And so that's the first time I've done it. I just kind of take what you give me and go out and replicate it and do the legal stuff. And certainly, there's something we can look at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. We'll probably, I'd have to call on you a couple of times for a little bit of information. We appreciate you being here.
Okay. Dinner's waiting when I get home.
For all of us?
For all of us. What are we having?
We're having leftover lasagna.
Oh, yeah, actually, that sounds good.
With stale bread.
That makes a good sandwich, by the way. Okay, unless there's any other questions of council at this time, or staff, or anyone else, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I'll open it up at this time and invite people to come up and have their say. A lot of you, we may know, but I just need you to state your name when you come up, and if you could, just sign in, so we have a record of that. Don't be shy. Come on up. Keep breaking the ice, that's all you're doing. You're a icebreaker, you.
My name's Nathan Maxman. I had, I have a bunch of questions, actually. First one is, a lot of cities use speed bumps. Aside from cost, is there a reason that you, like, doesn't use them in residential areas to keep speeds down? Next question was, if they were to bring the speeds down, could the speed limits post, the speed studies now say the speeds need to come up, would, if the speed studies supported bringing the speed limits down, could they be reduced? And then I was curious if the study on 20th Street was done, there was a bicyclist that was in an accident, I don't know if the speed study was before or after that.
Not sure.
I don't remember when that happened. And then I had a question about if the signs were removed, would 25 miles an hour be enforceable with the signs not being posted?
Chief, do you want to answer that?
On the 25 mile an hour sign, it would not be enforceable with electronic means, meaning a radar or lidar device. Technically, it would still be enforceable if you had other means that were practical, which I don't.
Maybe I should jump in here again.
Yep.
The vehicle code defines 25 mile an hour zones as either business or residential areas. And the way you determine whether it's a business or a residential area is with, within one quarter of a mile on one side of the street, or either businesses or residences, of 16 residences or businesses within a quarter, excuse me, 13 within one quarter mile, or 16 businesses or residents on both sides of the street within a quarter mile. So it's automatically, it simplifies you at 25, and you do not have to have a speed zone sign of 25 mile an hour up in place because it is a business and residential area.
Okay, thank you, Phil. And Doug, just real quick, before anyone else comes up, the speed bump thing, I think more likely, if you're looking at traffic calming things in neighborhoods, you're not usually typically in residential, not looking at speed bumps, you'd be looking at something to tighten up the feeling of the area.
Yeah, there's a lot of litigation going on right now over speed bumps. That is a road we don't, I recommend we do not go down. If we want to try to do some kind of traffic calming, there's other options that are available that we can do with delineation, you know, street delineation. It could be actual delineators, which you mount on a base along the road to bring it, you know, narrow it up in areas. We could do islands, different types of islands painted, or an actual island in the middle of the road to give it that narrow feeling. I mean, there are some things to do. Problem is, that all comes at a cost, and most of that kind of stuff is very costly. So...
Okay, I just wanted to kind of throw it out there, just to give an opinion, so thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Next person would like to speak? Come on up.
My name's Steve Farr. I live at 748 20th Street, on the park with Aldehauses, at the lower part there, on the fifth house up west of the stop sign at Hartley. One observation that I have made is there is no, and has not in the 21 years that I've lived there, been a 25 mile an hour speed limit going westbound from the stop sign at Hartley all the way up. So it is not posted currently. There is one, a couple of feet down from Willow View, coming in a eastbound direction. So there is one, but not in a westbound direction. And I applaud the Councilmember Turner's comments there about segmenting it perhaps because I think it's a somewhat of a unique situation there, and that blank stretch is what promotes the higher speeds. The trouble is, they're not slowing when they get to our subdivision. You know, that subdivision was done in 1965, and I got to believe it was designed to be a 25 mile an hour street way before the other subdivisions were done up to the west there. So nothing's really changed as far as the circumstances right in front of our homes with all of that pocket there. I do applaud the city for repaving, spending money to smooth out our street, which probably increased the speed. But I've also noticed, it was a repave project and not a reconstruct. The inadequate drainage that has caused the base to kind of falter a little bit there. I've got water sheets across the street with just the least amount of rain at the corner of my lot because a drainage inlet was not put there when the pavement was taken off before the new pavement was put down. So you still have the problem, and the street is failing already. You've got alligatoring and cracking that's going on to your new pavement already. Five years from now, when it's back to the condition it was just before you paved it, you come up and do another speed study, and I think it's going to be a little bit lower. I don't want to ramble too much. A lot of the points that I was going to make have already been brought up, so I won't be redundant with that. I would be curious, though, if perhaps the ordinance could be continued on this 20th Street part, perhaps Phil could come out and throw his traffic counters down now in the wintertime, or as the winter approaches, when the water's heating cross the road, when all the bird pass are out there and all of that, when it is a little bit more dangerous situation than it is in June, when the, my understanding, when the traffic study was done. I think we'd appreciate that. The situation is not safe for 30 miles an hour in the subdivision.
Thank you, Steve.
It's a long walk up, isn't it?
I know. First of all, I wanted to thank you guys. I just did the harvest celebration festival yesterday. It's amazing.
How'd it go with the rain? I know it was hammering, you guys, for a while.
It doesn't stop because they keep coming out. And we gave out almost 3,000 pieces of candy. So that just goes to show that our neighborhood, and our neighborhood is actually one of the most sought-out neighborhoods for light trigger treating and things like that because of the... Give me a second. Wow. I think it's because, a lot of people say that our neighborhood is one of the best neighborhoods to even live in, and I think it's because of the people and because of the neighborhood we live in. And if I gave out almost 3,000 pieces of candy, I do not think with that many kids that come in that neighborhood, it's not, it's not safe to go 30 miles an hour at all. I did think maybe if, it's something that we could do, can we put like a slow children sign up, or is there something that could, could we put something like that up that would help slower without having to have 30, 25, like, it doesn't have to have a regulation, but just saying, slow, this is where their children, you know? I have my daughter, and we just got two kittens for her birthday, and I would hate for one of those baby kittens, you know, those are her, like, babies, to get run over by a car because there's a higher speed limit. Another thought is, can they put the 25, like, I think it was something you requested, 30 through that stretch where there's not, but put a 25 sign, like, can, I don't know, if you might have already explained it, if it has to be a certain mileage, like, one mile, it has to be 30 before it's 25, or can they do 30 and put a 25, like, before Mellor, like, in that residential area? Can they do that? Is that possible to do?
That's something that Phil said he...
Well, the current survey encompasses that whole area, but like Phil said, you know, there was a possibility, I believe, if they could look at that, that would have to be a separate survey for that area because right now, it encompasses the whole length from Willow View or Alden all the way down to Hartley.
Do you have to make this decision today, or can it be, is it something that needs to be made today, the decision for it to go up to 30?
No, I don't believe the council has to make that decision today.
All right. I'd like it to be 25. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Wamburg. I recently moved on to 20th Street and loving it, do things that we were warned about, Halloween and fast drivers. We experienced Halloween last night, which was very exciting. But I have a three-year-old and a five-year-old, and the speed is definitely noticed, and it's a concern. I know, it was mentioned that that open area would be the cause of the speed, but honestly, as new eyes on the street, I see a lot of westbound cars speeding, and that's what I see more rather than eastbound. Not saying it's not both ways, but I don't think that the argument of that open space being the cause of it is valid. I mean, I'm not sitting at my window all day watching cars go by, but from my observation, it's been at least equally westbound. I would like 25 also, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. It's Tony Pierce. So nothing's more important than, you know, protecting our citizens, especially the children. But the biggest problem that I seen hearing this was the fact that the police couldn't enforce the 25 because of this law. So how can we, how can we solve that problem? How can we make it so the chief and his men can enforce this 25, or find a way to make this a little safer and give them the power and authority to make this happen? You know, we can request all we want for 25, but if, you know, the law states we can't enforce it, you know, we've got to find another way. So what are some of the options we have there?
I think that the segmentation aspect that Phil's going to take a look at is a potential way of at least keeping 25 in one section, at least making it enforceable for law enforcement.
Yeah, that would certainly be, you know, if we'd have to wait and see what the survey or the speed zone study found, potentially that could be a way of solving it.
Yes? You made a good point there, and, you know, I know that they're looking to the city, but really, it's the people that are traveling the streets that are the problem. It's not the city. And whether we put a 25 or 30, as Phil said, it's irrelevant, they're going 35, 36. And what's happening is, if we remove the signs, we can't enforce it. If we put it at 25, we cannot enforce it. If we put it at 30, which is Phil's recommending, we can literally go out there and ticket people that are going the current speed now of 35, 36, 34. We can ticket those people legally. Anything else, we can't, we can't even enforce any of that. Because if we get taken away the signs, they're going to go the prevailing speed of a prudent and reasonable driver. So the real thing that we need to do is to enforce the existing speed limit at 30 and be able to take them to court and enforce it, and also, you know, let your neighbors know they're the problem, or not your neighbors, but the people that are, you know, traveling down your street, because your neighbors probably aren't speeding like that. But the thing is, you just asked the golden question, what can we do? What we can do is make it 30, and everybody that's going 35, which is the prevailing speed, we're going to, we'd have to ticket them. And knowing this now, the chief can put a, you know, we can put a squad car out there, we can put a decoy car out there, do any number of things. But short of that, anything else, we can't do anything. Putting a 25 mile an hour speed limit is not going to help at all because we can't enforce it now at all. We're illegal to force it. If we remove the signs, it's illegal to enforce it. So your question is, 30 miles an hour, we enforce it, anybody going 35, boom, they get a ticket. And the chief knows about it, and that's the real answer to the problem, short of putting up a children, you know, slow children, that might be a good way of doing it, too. But enforcing it is going to be a real problem if we don't have the right signs because of a law. It's not us, it's the law.
Good question. Thank you, Doug. You have to hurry up, don't you?
My name's Ken Ferris, and I live on 20th Street. And my questions are to the chief, when was the last time you gave a ticket on 20th Street?
Well, staff just checked those numbers, and we haven't, I checked numbers for speeding tickets. We have not written a speeding ticket in the last two years on 20th Street. Prior to that, I don't know.
So this is all based on you guys using radar or...
Yes, yes.
So if you're not using it, why do we have to go by the law? I mean, you're, this is all, you're saying it's the law, Kenny, that's what we have to do? But if they're not using the law, they're not using radar on 20th Street, why do we have to enforce this law?
Well, I think the one thing that's happening right now is, we may not even, I wasn't even aware of this problem. The chief may not have been aware of this problem. He didn't think it was a problem area. Obviously, people come out, it's a problem area. He knows it now. So now, if we do want to ticket it, we have to go by the law in order to enforce this 35 is five miles over the speed limit, you get a ticket. So we didn't know about it, now we know about it. Now chief can say, hey, guys, we need to put some enforcement down there, we're going to put a 30 mile sign, anybody that's going 35, nail them. And he couldn't, you know, he didn't even know the problem existed before, so he didn't fix it. So avoiding the law and not doing anything, it's just not going to fly, so.
But they're not writing, they're not writing tickets. They have a, historically, they've...
I know, but now they might because we know you're here, and we know, and we care, you know, and we do care, and we want to make sure it's safe.
If you cared, you'd have 25. So is your neighborhood...
If it's 25 and they're going 35 already, it is...
But they're not because the law hasn't been enforced. He's admitted he hasn't got a ticket.
So that's, that could be the answer.
Yeah, that's the thing, if you don't enforce the law.
Well, here's another question. Chief, and unfortunately, Margaret's not here, how many complaints have we had in the past two years on 20th Street?
I checked with staff, and the only complaints that we've had in that area that I could find were complaints regarding 20th and Hartley with a stop sign violation. So we had been out doing enforcement at the stop signs for the past, I don't know, over the past six months or so, I recall, some complaints in that area. I don't, I couldn't come up with any information that we had, calls regarding speeding complaints on 20th itself for speeding. Don't have any evidence of that.
Mr. Ferris, have you called?
Yeah. As a homeowner, as a taxpayer, as someone that's children, I'd like to do 25.
Thank you, Phil. Come on up, Phil.
Come on up, Phil. If Phil jumps up here every once in a while, folks, we'll get everyone through.
I gotta just be a second here. Someone asked when this was done, and it was done between August 5th and 10th of 2015. I did it in the good weather of last summer. Just then we analyzed the data over the winter time, and things got slow. During that period, there was hundreds and hundreds of actuation, so it was a very large sample size. And I'm looking at, for that five-day period, the 15th percentile is 25 miles an hour. That means only 15% of the people were doing 25 mile an hour.
One percent.
One percent.
Thank you, Phil. Next up? You're not gonna hurry at all, are you?
Not at all. My name is Tim Barnes, and I just had a question about the enforcement angle on it. You said that if we, if, if the signs were taken down, the, the code for residential and business is 25 miles an hour. Now, does that, does that trump the speed study findings? If you take the signs down, and it is seen as a 25 mile per hour zone because it's residential, even though you've done a speed study showing that it's 35 miles an hour?
Can I get you to kind of direct it at the microphone? Oh, it doesn't pick it up. Sorry.
So if we take the signs down, and it's a 25 mile an hour zone because of the lack of signage, and it's in a residential neighborhood, does that supersede the, the speed?
No, it would be enforceable.
Would not be enforceable.
The, the sign that Phil was talking about earlier is, with a certain amount of lineal feat in so many homes or businesses, you don't have to post a sign if certain requirements are met, meaning it'll be 25 miles an hour. If it's beyond that, then you must post a sign for speed limit. Phil, is that correct?
Correct.
And the, and the issue, I think, is how you enforce it. So what the statutes provide is that you need to have your speed limit justified by the, by the traffic study in order to use radar to enforce the speed limits. And as the chief has mentioned earlier, other than radar, he doesn't have any effective tools to enforce it. It's still, it's still, the 25 is still the speed limit, it's just can't use a radar to prove it in court law.
So, so the follow-up question I have to that, is you said there's other, there's other methods other than radar to enforce that, but, but we don't have those means currently.
Well, there, I think of three methods right now. Two of them are not practical in that area. One of them would be what's known as pacing of vehicle's speed. That's, that's really not practical, there's not a lot of room to do that. And, and people would see you right away. It's not like you're on a highway where you can, you can stay back a certain distance and pace a car. So that's, um, timing of vehicles between a distance, that's not really effective in that area. Or, you know, to estimate the speed of a car, you have to have a highly trained and certified officer that qualifies as an expert in court based on his own estimation of the speed. And, you know, we, we have very few people that could do that.
So the third part of my question is then, we, the idea of islands had been brought up. And the first thing that was said in reference to the islands going in was, but that's gonna cost money, and that's gonna cost a lot of money. I see a room full of concerned people who live in that neighborhood. If they could come up with half the money through their own means, make sales, island care fundraisers, however they need to go through it to raise the money to make that city safer, is there something the city could do to help match those funds? And if that's what they want, to help narrow that traffic in, if they were to show that initiative, is that something that the city could look into doing?
It's a good suggestion.
Anything's possible, and vote for Measure Z. That raises money for that very type of, make it work fast.
But that's something that could be in the day?
I, I, it's a, it's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Green. I don't live on 20th Street. I don't have the problem of speeding. It's out of a built-in speed limit. That's kind of where we live in our neighborhood. But I would like to point out, just what I know, when I do slow down, it's not based on a speed limit sign. There is a sign, probably a sign posted, probably illegal in some fashion, that says, "Slow, children in this neighborhood." And I just want to throw out the idea that the city has a duty to obviously set speed limits, but its actual ability and the police department's ability to be there 24/7 and actually enforce that is kind of limited. So you do need to basically follow state law, which at least in the case of traffic, attempts to actually mimic human behavior. There are so many things in government that you can't even, you know, what the law says on one thing, it has nothing to do with the reality of human behavior. In traffic studies at least, we're, we're taking the knowledge that the city can't be out there 24/7, the police won't be out there 24/7. What does human behavior say is happening on this particular stretch of road? We're gonna go ahead and set a speed limit on that. But I can tell you, I come from Fresno, speed limit signs on residential streets, that doesn't even happen. But what perks my eyes up are the little foam, the little yellow foam things that looks like a kid running in the street, or it's, it's a sign like they have if they're on the spur that says, "There's, there's children in this neighborhood." So I think there are things we can do, I'm just throwing it out, because it sounds like you have a good supportive neighborhood back there to begin with. You could probably do that tomorrow, and probably do your own kind of speed calming using available things. And then to the extent that you have to follow that up with actual enforcement, it sounds pretty much like your hands are tied. You could probably bifurcate it or segment or what have you. You know, it doesn't sound like the study itself is the problem. You know, the problem is, people speed, they don't even follow the signs that are there, so what are you gonna do? So my bright idea would be, you know, see what you can do to encourage the neighborhood to take their own positive steps, using things that are totally street legal now. If it absolutely can't go, there's probably a way, and I would ask the attorney, if the resolution can be bifurcated, if that one thing on 20th is still problematic, is there a way to trail that and pass the rest of the resolution, so you can get on with the other stuff that you need to do? Beavens is a good example too, they paved that, I don't know if we got to put out a next, or like the next day, because people are going 50 miles an hour down there. So it's a really nice street now. So, and I think on the same study, I think proposing to set one speed limit up to the top of the hill, and then you shorten it down on that last little curve, you know, how are you gonna enforce that even if it's a different speed limit? So I just want to point out, I understand the concern, I think everyone has the same concern here, that we don't want people jamming through the neighborhood or hitting kids. But a kid's gonna get hurt at 25 or 30, that's not really the problem. The problem is setting the speed limit, getting the signage right, so you can actually enforce it. But what other things can you do above and beyond that that'll help kind of slow things down in that neighborhood? And that's all we got. Thank you.
Hey Doug, the, the, it's the law of crosswalk delineators that are perm-mounted on Forbes. Is there, is there something similar to that that would be, you know, children at play or, or even, you know, those, that, that, can we legally put those down the middle of a street that doesn't have striping? I know that 20th does have some striping, it's probably not.
20th Street has a centerline in it, and, and that, and that's honestly a good question, because there are, unfortunately, just like the speed zone, there are all kinds of rules and regulations on signs. But I could get together with Phil, and we can take a look at what kind of possible signage can we, you know, put up there that meets all the state codes. It would alert drivers to, one, children present, and, you know, two, it's a residential neighborhood, you need to slow down. And, and let's take a look at some of the signages that, that meet state requirements, and that we could get put up there. And we'll definitely do that, get together with Phil, and we can report back at the next council meeting on what signage is available that would possibly help alleviate the situation.
And then Phil, if we did some sort of traffic calming in that way, could you redo that portion of the study now, or do we have to wait five years?
How much you want to pay me?
And actually, and Phil, what is our deadline?
I might not get out the door if I said I couldn't do it.
There's a lot of residents here, we're feeling rather liberal with our wallet.
And, and what is our deadline right now, if you know?
The current speed zone, are you asking about when it expires?
Yeah.
I believe it's already expired. I, I don't, you know, I gave it to you five years ago, I don't know when you finally adopted it. It was in sometime in 2011, so we're coming to the end of the year now, so we're, we're expired, I believe, right now on the fast speed zone.
So with that being said, currently we're at 25, and this is horrible to say in a public meeting, but if somebody was going 30, and we got them on radar at 30, wrote them a ticket, and a 25, would that be enforceable right now because of our traffic study being expired?
I don't believe so. Now that court, that ticket wouldn't hold up in court, because there's no current speed zone study. If it was, if you wrote the ticket based on radar, use of electronic device.
So it's important that we get this done soon for all of these, right? They're all expired?
Yes. I mean, I, I would recommend since 20th Street is the controversial one, that you adopt the rest of the study in absent that one, and we'll figure out what else to do. If that's what you want to do, that's why I see you leaning, so I'm gonna give you that option.
Thank you.
You know, I, I did what I was supposed to do according to the law, and I'm recommending you keep 20th in there and enforce it at the higher level. But if the council's uncomfortable, you have a bunch of other expired ones, you can, you don't have to follow my recommendations.
And with that, really quick, since we're still in the public hearing format, I mean, let's say, what can we enforce right now with radar? I mean, if, since it's expired, what can we enforce on 20th right now? What if somebody was going 40?
No, I can't enforce it with radar. I'd have to use other means.
It would have to be basically an expert officer's opinion saying it's reckless driving.
Well, if it was reckless, yeah, there, there's other enforcement, but what I was referring to is, we couldn't write just speeding tickets on 20th. But if it was a, we had other evidence to develop that it was a reckless driver case or an exhibition of speed, or I, or it happened to be an officer that was an expert that could estimate the speed, then I could enforce it all I wanted to, I just couldn't use radar.
Okay. Well, then this will go for those of you that live on 20th that are here tonight. You know, as it stands right now, without being able to, right now, we cannot radar enforce. So, you know, maybe by a show of hands, I mean, I know 30 is not the, is not the ideal thing, and we can definitely look at 25, but if we have to enforce it 30 with radar, I mean, are any of you for that?
Well, because 85% of the people are going 35 right now.
They're actually down to 36 right now is the percentile.
You can't do anything about it.
The one thing that, that a lot of people didn't get a chance to see, as we went through our council packet last time, Phil does an amazing job discovering every single incidental curb, and every bush, and every, you know, thing that affects traffic that the reasonable and prudent driver may not see. One of the recommendations they, he made at the last meeting was that we remove the speed limit going towards, I won't call it a junk food junction, even though I did. Anyway, going into the karate area there, they were going to put up a sign that shows that there is going to be, you know, a traffic circle or around about it there, because the reasonable and prudent driver may not realize that. And so, you know, we're trying to do the right thing. Unfortunately, the fact that everybody's traveling 36, like I've already said, that is not the city's fault. We would love to enforce it now that we know it's a problem, I think that we would be happy to do that. But by making this speed limit anything other than 30 miles an hour, which Phil has already used the maximum amount of latitude allowed by law, then we won't be able to enforce anything, and we can put up all the signs we want about kids and stuff, and they should be slowing down anyway, but it kind of ties the chief's hands. And I think this is what Michael Green was talking about. So anything we do to try and lower it, that's great, but the prevailing speed is 36, we have to post it at 30 in order to enforce it with radar, which is the only way the chief said we can do it. So this seems like the best solution is to suddenly start enforcing it and get whatever signage we can. I will say though, Marty brought up the, those little things that are over by the, the courthouse in Lucerne. Anybody that drives Highway 20, Elizabeth has seen this, those things are smashed out of oblivion, they're gone completely now, because the prevailing speed is far over 35. They don't care about the pedestrian crossing thing, they run over them on a regular time. We're talking about people that speed. We're not talking about city laws and regulations. We're trying to do the best we can with the tools we have. Now that the chief knows, I think there would be enforcement down there, I think you just need to understand the position that we're in in order to, to get this to happen, is to get to 30 miles an hour and enforce it, and whatever extra we can get would be great, and Doug's gonna work on that, right? I think that's our only solution, because, you know, moving this out is not gonna change the traffic study. Although I do agree that perhaps if we did a traffic study with only eight hours of daylight, which we're about there now, there might be a small reduction. Is that possible, Phil? Because it's darker sooner, and things might slow down.
It's possible, it's not gonna get you down to 25.
Continue on with the public comment? I wondered when you were gonna come up.
Yeah, that's right. My name's Ken Leeway, I live across from most of these guys. Anyways, I think somewhere between no ticket in two years and us not complaining, that's kind of the problem here. I think it all took us by surprise, like, oh, they're gonna raise the speed limit? Well, I haven't complained to you guys yet, because it's kind of tough to, oh, it's that guy that lives down the street, he goes, you know, 50, and we have some gross violators in our neighborhood. Young kids, you know, we're all sixteen, we have our head up, or you know what, so, but it's, it's a problem. We need to see, you can come park in front of my house, man. We need to see more enforcement, I think it would get everyone to slow down. I agree too, Kenny. So we, we have to take your word, though. If you raise it to 30, then he's gotta enforce it, you know?
Right.
Going off what you're saying.
Regarding the enforcement, there's a couple of issues with that. Typically, in a residential area like this, most of your traffic enforcement happens on the busier streets, and then we respond to citizen complaints in certain neighborhoods, and we try to attack those regarding information that we have when there's a speeding problem. And we also look at the accident data that we have. And with, without seeing accidents there and not getting complaints, that's not high on the list to get enforcement. But now, like, like council member Parlet said, it's clear to me there's a problem there with speeding vehicles. So we're in a, a situation now where we know there's a problem, and we need to do something to enforce it. Regarding the, the problem is, we don't, we need radar to enforce speed limits in the city, because the other means aren't practical for us in the city. I don't have officers lined up as experts that can estimate speed, so that's why we use radar. It's the most effective way to enforce speed in, in a compact area like this. So, but the problem is, right now, the current survey's expired. And until we get a new survey implemented, we can't use radar to enforce it in there. I can do other things, I can park a car there, I can do visibility patrols through the area, I can, I can try to find a radar trailer that we could put in the area. Those are things I could do right now.
Because it is neighbors too, Kenny, you're right. A lot of people, and I'm not naive, I know that, because we live down in the congested area where the street, you know, we live on the other side of Jeff and Jackie Hansen, they live on the inn. And so we know it's a decline, it's a hill, if you're not paying attention, you can go up to 30 or 35. I'm practical, I've been driving for a long time now. But it is a problem, and, you know, I, I, I know what you're saying, those signs will come down, but children playing is sometimes more effective than, than a speed limit. And we'll, you know, put those other people, oh, there's kids here, I better slow down. You know, so, I don't know, it is a problem. But I would like 25, obviously, I know it's not gonna, probably won't happen, but you hear me say it?
Okay, Kenny.
Come up again?
Yeah. Just say your name again.
What?
Just, do your name again.
Oh, Dorina, Dorina Lucas, I don't know if I said my name.
She had a Mac on, he loves to talk.
I know, he's like, "I'm not going up there," and I'm like, "I'll go up." I'm scared. What if we start complaining? What if you give us like, you know, say six months? No, seriously. What if we start, like, every time, because I know, since we've lived on that street, we've said that to ourselves, like, man, people are going way too fast, but we've never thought to, I mean, I'm guilty of it too, I'm not someone who's done that. And another thought is, I mean, what if I personally went door to door to everyone on 20th? And if, if they want 25, I mean, we have to listen to the people, does that change the law with Phil? Would, would that change things? It won't change anything? No, it has to be, okay, well, what if, if we started complaining?
Regarding your, your point on complaining, I encourage any neighborhood, regardless whether it's a traffic problem or anything else, to call the police and notify us about this concerns. Because... concerns, because we are stretched thin, I mean, like you've heard other people say the police can't be everywhere, we've got a lot of stuff to do, so we have to look at data and respond to complaints, if we get complaints, we will come out and enforce. However, right now, I don't have a valid speed survey, so we're talking about an issue with speeding, okay, so, I can't enforce it today, I can only enforce it if this resolution is implemented, because again, radar is really the only effective thing I can use to do that. So that's why a speed zone survey is important, and I agree with you guys, I don't, I've never liked the fact that speed limits go up, I didn't like it when the survey said Main Street should go up, but I supported the survey because that was how we were able to enforce the law, and the thing, you know, the people are driving based on roadway conditions, that's how people decide how fast they're driving, they don't pay attention to the signs, so, that's, and the conditions that exist there is what causing them to be 85th percentile of 36 miles an hour. But if I had a 30 mile an hour zone, I could write a ticket for 35.
Sure, I get that, it's just, that is our little area right there on 20th is not, it's, so what if we, can we put a temporary slow child sign, and then do, like, in a couple months, do another survey?
Well, the city can't, I don't think the city can advise you, private citizens on placing signs on public roadway, and that's something that should be left to city staff to research. But as Phil said, if the council wishes that he separate and do another survey in residential neighborhood, that's the council's option, ask him to do that, and we would have to wait to see what that survey shows before they make a decision.
Is there anything we can do as residents to, like, can I put one maybe on my front lawn, please go slow or something?
I can work on trying to get some, maybe a decoy car out there, maybe I can find a radar trailer to borrow, the city's radar trailer doesn't exist anymore.
Just to let people know how fast they're going, that would be good.
But that's what I could do right now, I'd certainly like to know about the complaints if people are seeing cars speeding, so that we can get into the area and be visible.
If we start complaining now, will that happen, like, I mean, I'll complain tomorrow, but something's gonna happen.
It'll happen. I mean, we would be responsive to your complaint, just understand I don't really have a reasonable method to write a ticket right now.
No, I understand that, I just wanna forward to help this speed 25, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, I think one thing that she probably can do is, I mean, I think what you said, going door to door and letting your neighbors know, I mean, the hard truth, reality of this is this is a street that is a residential area, it doesn't go through to anywhere else except a residential area, which means the people who are speeding live in that area too, so I think that public education element is probably, you know, perhaps one of the most immediate and quickest things you can do to try and help reduce speed in that area.
So if we are to all start complaining?
I think he just got elected.
Okay, 25, thank you.
Another person just nodded, I love that.
A bit calm, modest confidence. Greetings, city council members, chairs, everybody, chief, I'm here. First of all, I am Jeanette Pion, a local here, Lake Shore Boulevard, I got it right, Lake Shore, and first of all, I want to begin my comments by giving a public praise to Mr. Chief Brad here, I don't want to say your last name because I might mess it up, you know, it's not offensive, I know you guys are stretched thin, you and your men, and you're doing everything you can, and what you've been able to do for us, we commend you and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I wish we could clone you and have a whole bunch just like you. Since we're on the topic of street, let's see, how should I word this, quickly and efficiently, have any of you guys walked down Lake Shore Boulevard though, northbound, maybe from High Street going all the way to the high school, towards middle school, elementary school, Lange? I don't have a car, so my feet and my cane is my vehicle, I have to walk down this road every day to get to my appointments, and almost every time I'm walking down that road, especially northbound, I almost come close to getting hit. I wouldn't suggest that you guys try it in a large group or with an officer, because then they will naturally slow down, but I do suggest that if you would please, go in pairs of twos at different days, walk this road, we are not exaggerating, we on Lake Shore Boulevard have the same concerns as the people on 20th Street, it's an ongoing thing, it's incredible, and I've stopped a lot of other pedestrians that are passing me, I greet them, and I say, do you have a few minutes? I like to do my own survey. What's your name, how long have you lived here, and how often do you walk this road? How many times have you come close to getting hit? Is it just me, am I seeing things or hallucinating here? And they go, no, we all come close to getting hit, the drivers on this road, their words, not mine, stupid, stupid drivers, and I went, yeah, it's, again, Lake Shore is beautiful, this is a beautiful place to live, safetyness is a big concern, children, there's that Lange School, I've noticed just walking up to High Street and back home that the road is paved nicely, and then if you're going northbound, and once you get to Lange and Lake Shore Boulevard, the road changes, it goes from immaculate and smooth to like, big third world country holes from Lange on down northbound, and I'm like, hmm.
Okay, this is about the speed study, not...
She's, she's, yeah, that's relevant.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't about the road condition?
It's both.
Okay.
It's the speed and the road conditions, and thank you for asking, because I don't want to leave with people having any misunderstandings or questions, I want to make sure we all properly dialogue. Safetyness, the speed is an issue, people are going too fast, again, I don't know if you guys had a chance to review mine and CJ's complaint forms on the sidewalk and the speed, have any of you guys had a chance to come down there and take a look at it, or Phil possibly?
Well, I walk it every week, so, with the dogs, but I will let you know that our last, our last meeting regarding this very subject, from Lange to our city limits, did come up, because it's still recommended at a 35 mile an hour zone, but what we directed staff to do, and Phil also, was to look at potential for utilizing the school speed limit, because of its proximity, even though we've got some private property there unfortunately, so we're looking at potentially trying to find a way to extend the 20 mile an hour school speed limit onto that section of Lake Shore, so it is being looked at.
Right, that'll help answer CJ's, because that's a question that CJ had here the last time we were here, was about how close the public schools are to Lake Shore, and a lot of the people that aren't from Lakeport or that aren't locals or don't live in that side, they don't know that there's an actual, you know, three different public schools there, I've also interviewed the children, like, old enough children, just ask them without asking their names, you know, do you feel safe when you're walking to school? How many times have you felt like a car came too close? And this is like middle school and up, you know, without getting too personal, and they're like, you know, we're scared of the street, and we're trying to stay off of it by walking on the tall grass or whatever, you know, everyone's afraid because people are going 55, 60 miles an hour there, it's an ongoing, everyday thing, every single day that I'm there, and I see the bicyclist flipping off the drivers because the drivers are too close because the white biker lanes, the bicycle lanes, have faded, and then there's all the rubble in the bike lanes, so that, I'll hear the bicyclist, I'm not gonna stop them because they're riding, you know, they're on a roll, I'm not gonna go, excuse me, can you give me three minutes of your time? But I watch them, I analyze, I study, I observe, and with a little bit of common sense, it's amazing how far they could go, and so, you know, phew, I'm so glad I have that, I'd be in trouble, I'd have been run over already, and so, you know, I hear the bicyclist complaining about the same thing, you know, it's dangerous there, and I, like you said the last time I stood in front of you, you said that if we don't tell you, you don't know, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not standing here pointing or finding fault, I'm standing here presenting the complaint, which you've heard me touch on this before, I'm sure, the last time I was here, is that it is an issue, I want to make sure everybody knows about it and for the record, and what can we do, I don't want to wait for somebody to get hit or animal, I saw two dogs almost get run over last week, my heart palpitated, I was scared to death, they were off of leeches, and they were free right on Lake Shore Boulevard, it was daytime, it wasn't even all the way dark, the sun was still up, and the speeders wouldn't even slow down for the dogs, they were right in the middle of the road, and I'm like, oh, so, you know, have a walk, put a camera, do whatever we need to do, maybe, you know, test the majority of the speed with the radar or whatever have you, what you guys need to do, but that is an issue, that the road conditions and the speed is a major, major issue. It's a beautiful place to live, but boy, I'd like to live to be at least 80 and not die from getting hit from a car. So, thank you very much for your time, and take care.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, no, it's me again.
Uh-oh.
Tony Pierce. So, my understanding with how city government works is that the council oversees City Hall and the police department, and if the citizens of Lakeport want something done by either the city or the police, they can take it to either them or the council, but your jurisdiction kind of ends there, the speed limit law with it needing to fall in line with the recommended 30 is above you guys, so, no matter how many times citizens complain to you guys saying we want it 25, you guys don't even have the ability to fix that, so, the only thing that I see that can solve this problem is by enacting the 30 mile an hour, so the police can begin ticketing again, and then the citizens can call for another survey to be done later on in the winter, hopefully bump it down to, you know, 5, 10 miles an hour if we're lucky, but is that how it works, am I correct in that?
Basically, if you're trying to enforce it with radar.
And it's just not...
Which is our only choice.
Yeah, it's just not reasonable to have to either train every single police officer as a specialist, that's gonna take way too much time, and we won't be able to ticket for way too long. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. You have a fresh face.
Oh, somebody do, always. Hello, my name's Mike Terry, I live at 828 20th Street, right in the middle of the main subdivision, we've been there almost 30 years, and we've watched the speed go up, and Chief, not in your time, but we have complained about speed in the past, I personally called, not, I mean, we kind of, basically kind of lived with it, my kids grew up, and luckily they all lived, you know, and now we've got a lot of new kids on the street. So I want to say, I really do want to see it stay 25, once you raise it to 30, like the gentleman was just saying, we can never, it's really hard to go back, what I've encouraged to hear from the council that you're willing to try other ideas and explore, what I ask is that you do explore, put off your decision on 20th Street. Chief, I'd like to, you will get complaints from us now, I would ask that you put a car, even the, it was amazing when you parked the one down at the end of the street, how it slowed things down. Have them park the car for whatever time you can, I ask you to redo the survey after that's been done, and let's come back and revisit it. Once you raise it to 30, we won't be able to go back, so, I would like to say, I've been there 30 years, I want to stay there another 30, thank you.
Thank you, man. Here, another one, I was wondering when you were gonna come up there.
Tom Curry, 20th Street, I agree with Mike, I agree with Mike, it seems to me like we're being blackmailed here, if we don't say we want, if we don't allow 30, then we can't enforce anything, that doesn't seem right, it's a blackmail.
Well, I think all of us up here would agree with that, we're in the same boat.
Yeah, okay, I think we need to have another study, either this gentleman does it again, or we get somebody else, let's get a comparison, we're going by one man's opinion, let's get a comparison, see if he's wrong, if we're wrong, but I think 25 is it, and like Mike said, if it goes to 30, they don't ever go back, and if it goes to 30, it'll go up to 20, or it'll go to 35, the people, it'll go to 40, which it is now, you can't even back out of your driveway to get onto the street to go to town without be worrying about somebody running into you, that's, not constantly, but very often, and with the new kids on the street, the little ones, it just, it worries me, it's a problem, and I hope that we can address it in a good manner, thank you.
Tom, you realize that it's 25, which is illegal for us to do, we can't enforce it with radar, you call up and you say, there's a guy going 35 miles an hour, 40 or whatever, and then the chief's answer would be, we can put a car out there, we could admonish him to slow down, there's nothing we can legally do to ticket anybody as long as we put up a 25 mile an hour sign, when the prevailing speed of your neighbors is 36. See, so, we can put up 15 miles an hour, it doesn't matter, we can't enforce anything, we can't do anything about it short of putting up signs to say, slow children, slow animals, the one thing that we can do is put up a 30 mile an hour sign, knowing that they're going 36, ticket everybody that's going 35 and 36, go door to door, tell everybody, put signs up that says, slow children, that's the one thing we can do. What you're asking us to do is put up a sign that is unenforceable, 25 miles an hour, now the chief can do nothing except go up there and say, hi, how you doing today, can you slow down, please? Because we can't give you a ticket because the sign we have is illegal, because the average person's going 36, and see, everybody keeps saying the same thing, you can wish 25, 20, 15, the legal law says, if you don't put 30 up, and he's already used latitude, it should be 35, he's going to 30, we can enforce that, and we will enforce it, he'll get radar, he'll do everything he can, if you want us to do 25, put this off, nothing's gonna happen, and someone could still get hit, someone going 36 miles an hour, because you can't stop them, it has to be 30 under law, it's not right, we don't want that, but if you want to be able to enforce it, you have to allow us to do 30.
So we're blackmails?
No, you're not blackmail, your neighbors are going 36 miles an hour!
Not our neighbors, they're the ones up the road.
Okay, whatever, but they're going down.
If the police department didn't do their job, that's our fault?
They never knew there was a problem until tonight.
All right, let's not get into an argument session. Tom, anything else? You got the, you got the mic there?
No, no, I, thank you for your time.
No, that's fine, thank you. Jim, I'm marking down two, just like other two people, okay?
Two, Tim Barnes, so one of the things I heard was, once the speed limit is raised, it can't be brought back down, from what I understood what this gentleman said right here, is it can be brought back down when another speed study's done, so, the only way to be able to enforce, and I live right around the corner, I live right around the corner, I hear you, the only way to enforce anything is to take it to 30 miles an hour and create a speed trap right there and nail every sucker doing 31 miles an hour until they figure out they need to do 28. And then we're gonna do another speed study, and that speed study's gonna come back and the 85th percentile is 32 miles an hour, which we can round down to 30 miles an hour, and then he can use his latitude to bring back down to 25, and then he hit everybody doing 27 miles an hour.
So what you just said will take 10 years to do.
Five.
Well, okay.
Five. However, right now you've got people doing 36, 40 miles an hour, and there's nothing we can do about it. If you allow the 30, and it's not ideal, but there's no other way to do it, and unfortunately, that's the way it works sometimes, you're looking at it, there's no other way to do it, you can make an effect where you can get people to slow down a little bit now, and I know that when I'm going down a street that's heavily patrolled by our friends in blue here, I do a little less than the speed limit, because I really don't want to take it in case my speedometer's a little wrong, which it has been. However, it can get back down to that 25 mile an hour speed limit that everybody's looking for, I think is the part that's getting missed, yeah, can, does it have to be done every five years, can it be done again in three years, can it be done again in two years? Once we've created the element on 20th Street of that being a heavily ticketed area and people are going slower? Can the timeframe on that be reduced?
The city could do a speed zone survey whenever they want to, the five years has to do with what's required under the law to keep the enforcement ability, so yes, they could go down there in a year and do another survey, and what you're saying, if we did hit the traffic that hard, potentially it would slow them down and bring it back down.
would slow them down and bring it back down.
And that's what we were talking to Phil earlier about.
Yeah.
Is how soon can we go ahead and do a new study, once we can put some sort of traffic calming in place, do the new study and look at it again?
I just think, I, I feel like that part kinda got missed, at, at least, you know, from what I'm hearing.
You make a good point.
So you give it a year at thirty, so that you can get it back down to your twenty-five, and you get in, you know, and now that, now that the chief knows that this situation exists, given his reputation and what he does in the community, I'm sure it will be more heavily patrolled.
Well, and everyone knows it exists, because I don't think anyone wants to be the neighbor down the street that's flying by at forty miles an hour either. I mean, people will be more aware now.
Unfortunately, neighbors are gonna start getting tickets. You know, so.
Thank you, Jim.
Is there a reason for it to take a year?
No, I just use that as an example.
Right, if we were to pass the resolution today, thirty days from now, the thirty mile an hour speed limit goes into effect, we increase the attention that we pay on that road, we now have tickets that are gonna start being generated, modify the speed. I'm wondering why, why would that take a year before we do another study?
I just use that as an example, but I think you'd want enough time span to change behavior, right? I can't tell you how long it's gonna take to change the behavior. I can just tell you that, um, if, if that's the direction and we've, we've got these problems over there, we'll hit it as hard as we can, we'll put it in the paper, we'll tell people on print, we are going to write you a ticket for five miles an hour over, so if you don't want one, you better slow down. We'll put it in the, put it everywhere we need to put it and then go out and write the tickets, if that's, you know, that's the approach we wanna take.
So tonight, if we were to pass this resolution, would we be able to modify it on its face, specifying that the thirty mile an hour did not go all the way to High Street, but actually started at Miller? Would that keep us from being able to enforce twenty-five from High Street to Miller? Would we have to conduct a whole other study in order to segment that, like we were talking about before?
I'm a little, little bit-
It's probably not practical, it's not in the current study, so I don't think you can pick it apart right now.
Okay, so, so it was modified then from Alden to Willow View due to the, the curvature of the road going up towards that higher density housing, is my understanding?
Yes.
Okay, so we had justification already in our report to modify it that far?
Yes.
But to change, change it on its face would likely be problematic then for enforcement? And so we get this other study done?
Yes. I mean, what you have in front of you is the, uh, the segment that the study's been done on, so-
Right, right. Okay.
You, uh, you have to look at that until you get another, another, another survey.
Hi, my name, my name's Sharon Curry. I won't run my name, because there's no Canadian word in my name. Okay, I understand everything that's been said. I'm wondering, can you, do you only give tickets to five miles over and you won't do anything in between?
Well, you, you wanna make sure that generally a five mile an hour is what we look at. We don't write people normally for one mile an hour, two miles an hour over the speed limit. Um, that's just, just not the right way to do business, in my opinion.
Okay. My other, um, question is, I keep reading about the manpower of the police department being so low.
Right.
And how much time can be given on this? I realize it's, you know, you don't have the manpower, so how, how do we handle that?
Well, we, over the past couple of years, we've been short on manpower, and that's why traffic enforcement has suffered, because we've had to-
Right, I understand.
We've had to concentrate on calls for service.
Sure, I understand.
But we, we are now, we have increased by another, um, two or three staff members, and actually the police department's been planning for, for some time to change our strategies, once these officers are all trained. We've got a couple more that are still in training. And starting after January first, we plan, plan to make traffic enforcement a huge priority in the city of Lakeport and be giving out a lot more tickets. So we already have that planned in place.
And isn't one of the new officers going to be at the school?
They're already there, yes.
They're already there, okay.
Yes. So, but, but we can always make time, when we get complaints about neighborhoods, whether it's traffic or some other kind of a problem, we, we try to make time to address those issues, which, that's what I would do in this situation, is try to make, make time to address that.
Okay. I've lived on Twentieth Street for forty-one years, and I lived here before all the new houses up at the end of the street, and it's always been a problem. We've had animals killed, you know, not lately, but in the years. And we just, and then all of our kids grew up, and now we have a whole new influx of war children, and, and it just worries us. So, um, thank you, and, um, yeah, let us know whatever we can do.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, you're getting a two by the side, you're there.
I just have a quick question. Uh, Mike Terry again. Uh, where was this, actually the survey, where was the study done? Where, where were the indicators set at? When the, um, was it, I mean, I don't remember-
We'll have to, we'll have to answer your question.
Okay, 'cause I mean, 'cause that's, that's kind of one that we're asked, we're talking back now, we're going, okay, where, now I just remembered seeing it. So I'd be curious to know where it was, was it done in our residential area or was it done up the street?
Okay.
And if it was up the street, shouldn't it be done in the residential area? Or, I mean-
Is there another aspect to that question, or you'll go ahead and answer?
No, I'm-
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mike.
Seven hundred and sixty feet west of Miller.
West of, six, seven, eight.
It's up on the, it's up on the far end.
That's, yeah, that's-
Where they're gonna gain max speed.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of down there.
One thing that, that you have to do, you, you, I cannot sit it way down on the, on the east end where it's influenced by the, by the stop sign either. You have to have free flowing traffic. You look under the guidance, you'd have to have, uh, you need to put these in the locations that are not influenced by, by traffic factors or anything else. So, I can't have it all the way down next to the stop sign on, on the east end, so people are just either decelerating or accelerating, because that doesn't give you an adequate, uh, view of what the prevailing speeds are. Has to be out in an open area, it's not, uh, influenced by any traffic control devices either, stops on at either end, and that's the place we chose to put it, and that's what we put in the past. It does indicate that people are flying through there, thirty-six miles an hour, eighty-fifth percentile. There are people going between thirty-six and forty, and forty-one and forty-five, and up to fifty miles an hour in that area. It's not conducive to a twenty-five mile hour speed zone. And again, the fifth, you know, the fifteen percentile speed is closer to twenty-five miles an hour. That means that eighty-five percent of people are going faster than the existing speed limit.
Phil, since we have you here, we're gonna, we're gonna use you a little bit. Uh, let me ask you a quick question from a professional standpoint. If we had two markers on that street, let's say that we kept it at a reasonable distance, what would be on the east end, not, not influenced by people accelerating off the end of the street or decelerating for the stop sign? But you had two markers, one where you placed it before and one, you know, further down, do you think you would get different readings based on the, the dynamics of the street?
Are you talking about placing it further east?
Yeah, yeah, but not, not to a point where people would be, you know, thinking about stopping or slowing down. You know, somewhere reasonable down there, you think you'd get a different reading down there?
I would still think that it would be closer to thirty-five than thirty.
Okay, okay. Just, just an opinion. All right, thank you.
Oh, Phil, I have one more question, real quick.
Sorry, I'll get you.
Um, if, if we wanted to redo this study, how soon, you know, sooner than five years? What's practical that we can look at it again?
I think that Chief related correctly. You need to have time for the results of increased enforcement, uh, to become known and, and a little bit of behavior change. So I wouldn't think that you wanna be doing it within three months. And if we're, the holiday period approaching, you have abnormal traffic behavior at this time, and I would think that we could do it, uh, sometime in the first of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, if I'm going to be laying down the counters, doing that, I need a pretty good weather as well. Typically, even though we don't have, have any typical weather patterns lately, but typically we have in January, we thought we have a couple of weeks without rain, and that would be the time to do it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. On down? Jennifer?
Yes.
You're getting a two.
Jennifer Lundberg. Um, my question is, a speed bump was brought up and then shot down, but if the condition of the road is what makes a car speed up, if there's a big bump in the road, they're gonna slow down, what is it that exactly that, um, is not appealing about a speed bump, as far as the process of getting it in?
Well, there's a number of issues with speed bumps. One, your emergency service people absolutely detest speed bumps. It tears up their equipment, fire trucks, ambulances, that type of thing, due to the weight. Two, it tears up the people's cars that bump over those things every time. And, Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's actually been litigations against cities putting in speed bumps, it's causing accidents. Um, I mean, there would be a liability to us, as a city, of putting a speed bump in and then somebody going too fast slams into it, crashes into a neighbor's house. I think that we would have some liability, uh, from that aspect as well.
Thank you, Jim.
It, and let me quantitate, there are a lot of other traffic calming measures that work every bit as well, if not better than a speed bump. I mean, there's, there's things out there. That's not saying we can't do some kind of traffic calming there, it's just a different type.
Hey, Ken Ferris, yes. Um, we, now that we've left, we've heard that the study is, was actually west of the residential area, and I understand, Kenny, that it has to be thirty or you can't do anything at all. And that's where the, the people were speeding the thirty-six miles an hour, like the gentleman stated. Why can't we post the thirty mile speed limit from there on and then leave at twenty-five and then do a study in January?
Because we will be able to enforce it. We still won't be able, it won't enforce it.
You won't be able to force where the study was at? If you posted thirty, where, on the west of Miller, like they said, that's where the speed limit was, that's where they put the strips on. The residential area, they did not do the study?
It's for the whole road.
It's for the whole road?
Yeah, that's not how it works.
It is, if you can't-
Phil's been doing this for forty years, and I have great respect for him and the methods that he uses, so we have to listen to the, that's not an opinion, they're facts, but, um, it's for the entire stretch of the road.
All right.
I understand your point. I would rather have it that way, too. Um, I'd rather have it twenty posted in front of my house, I'm on the corner of Ogs, and they kinda come around as fast as they can and use it as a ramp and fly down.
It's a sandwich.
So, I get it, too, but, yeah, it doesn't work that way.
Sure, thank you.
Sir, we need you to break in and phone. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak? Kenny, been sitting there so quiet?
Yeah. Ken Zederun. Um, I know the focus has been on Twentieth Street, and I agree with a lot of the comments and things that have been said, and I under, also understand the law as far as what your guy, your hands are being tied. But I'd like to know, when they do these studies, do they consider the blind intersections and the cross-traffic and what they have to navigate because of the increase in speeds? I know that on Twentieth Street, that may not be an issue, but on Martin Street it is, and on roads all over Lakeport, it's a serious problem. On Eleventh Street, it's a major problem. And I'd like, uh, Mr. Dow to address if, when they do these studies, he's been doing them for apparently thirty-five years, if every time he does a study on a section of road, if these blind intersections in Lakeport are considered and how it is factored into the study. And I'd also like to know, uh, how it's addressed that these people that are crossroads that have to navigate these intersections with the increase in speeds, what they're supposed to do. One of these days, there's gonna be a, probably a serious accident, one of these blind intersections, and there's probably gonna be a major lawsuit. And the city, I believe, Kevin can explain this, already has an ordinance that addresses, uh, the site distance at these intersections that I've been trying to get the city to, uh, deal with for twenty-plus years, and I haven't been successful. I've been ignored all, all along. And I talked to, uh, Councilmember Parlet about this. We went for a ride and looked at these intersections, and it's my understanding now that Kevin is, um, working on it. But I, I think that needs to be seriously considered for all of these roads that are being, uh, raised, the speed limit's being raised, and maybe Mr. Dow can explain for the last thirty-five years how that's been factored in.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Do we have anyone else? Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. I don't know, Phil, if you wanna comment on that last little bit?
Sure, one more time. Yeah, there are some blind intersections in this city. As I mentioned at the very beginning, one of the things that we look at, it's not just the eighty-fifth percentile speed, but we also look at the accident reports, to see if there are accident records. And we, I looked at the condition of the roadways, and, uh, specifically, uh, you don't look at the conditions that are readily apparent to the reasonable and prudent driver. Obviously, a road blind intersection is not readily apparent, and that would be one of those conditions that I would take into consideration in utilizing the little bit of latitude I had to decrease it from what the prevailing speed was at, at the time. So, once again, I only have a five mile an hour latitude, and that would be one of the things, if there were, uh, a blind intersection, that would be one of the things that would do. And, and, uh, I think that I identified one of those on, on, uh, which street was it? Martin Street.
Martin Street?
Yeah, and that was one of the things that concerned me, and that came out of that.
Phil, I appreciate you being here tonight.
Actually, Phil, you should probably stay up there.
Oh, okay. Come on, backup.
Yeah.
Hey, um, at this point, um, do we have any questions for, for Phil or for staff?
Yeah, for Phil, yeah. So, um, if the speed limit went to thirty, what would our sign requirement be for that section of Twentieth?
Thirty miles per hour.
But, so we have to have signs?
Well, you have to inform the motorist what the signs are.
How many?
Yeah. Well, it depends on, uh, it's not a very long street where that thirty mile an hour would exist, and I would expect maybe two.
Okay. And then on the, um, where the, the counters are placed, how far east from the stop sign of, of Hartley and Twentieth, would we legally have to go to make it valid?
Well, there, you know, it, this is a judgment thing, and, and what I would do, if I put them out again closer to the stop sign, is I would take my radar gun out and sit there for a little bit and see when people quit accelerating from the stop sign. And it would have to be beyond a little bit from where the acceleration. And then I'd look the other way and look and see when people start braking going eastbound, because you, you, you need to take it where there's free flow, not influenced by any traffic control devices.
Okay, that's, that's what I was saying.
Yep.
Okay, that was my question for Phil, anyway.
And one last thing I'd like to say is that, um, having gone through the studies, I, I really wanna let you know how much, um, I think I'm speaking for most of us, that the judgment that you exercise and the experience that you have and what you take into consideration. I know this has been very tedious for you, because you know what needs to be done and how it needs to be done, and you've been doing this for forty years, thirty-five years in Lakeport, done seven different studies, and really appreciate the detail. And I know that you came right down to Martin Street, taking the bush out on the one side- A lot of people have no idea, and the road curvature, when I saw the pictures and how you examined that and how it took away some of the visual field, and the regular and prudent driver wouldn't see that, I think that you did an incredible job, and it's just too bad that everybody else couldn't see the expertise and the great attention to detail that you have, truly appreciate your knowledge and why you're recommending what you do and how you went overboard, used your latitude to get it down to 30. So, I just want to personally thank you on the great job that I think that you've done, whether or not it's popular or not, I think that we have to do what.
I had to argue to represent me.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it really did, and you know, the law did change, and it took some latitude away from me, and now there's a lot more scrutiny on these particular types of studies. And you know, I have a license, so I have a traffic engineer's license, and I have to do it correctly to the best of my judgment. And once again, the law did change in 2009, and there's some places around this county that I wish I had more latitude.
Well, and I was here five years ago when we did it last time, and I remember thinking it was the most absurd thing I had ever heard, that that is how our speed limits are set, and it's really taken me five, six years to wrap my head around it, that that's how these things work. So, I understand why people are so upset by that.
And you probably didn't want to raise the speed limit on Main Street either, did you?
No. I mean, not so many people came out. It's really great when people come out, so we understand what's happening on these streets. But, yeah, it worked out. It worked out just fine, and that's why I have some reassurance that this could be okay too. I do, I mean, part of me even wonders, if we go back out there, is there a chance that they could drive even faster?
You know, once again, a few people, especially the ones who are familiar with the neighborhood, are kind of even, not even gonna notice the signs, they're not gonna pay attention to it. These are all people who live up in that area. Once in a while, some visitors, but you know, it's the neighbors up there, the people who are complaining are the ones who are causing the issues.
So, the hope would be that you would get the word out and they would slow down a bit?
You know, most people do not look at the speed limit, so they drive according to the conditions of the roadway. Once in a while, you'd hope that they would look at it and say, oh, well, it's 30 and I'm doing 38 miles an hour, I should slow down. That's where they become effective. But, you know, this is a situation that, you know, the law was established many, many years ago, and this is the way we do in the state of California, and it's the legislature that establishes. And like it's been established here, you know, you don't have much latitude, and I wish I had a little more. But even if I had more, I probably wouldn't exercise it because I know it wouldn't do any, any good in this case.
Chief, I think.
I was just gonna say, I don't think it's, with the right enforcement, I don't think it's likely that the speed limit would then go up before we do another survey. Because although the people don't tend to pay attention to the signs, they will pay attention to the enforcement. So, I just wanted to throw that out. The other thing I wanted to say is, I believe Phil mentioned he could do another survey in January. I don't think that's enough time for me to do enforcement because we have to, to use the radar, we have to wait 30 days out from, if the council chooses to go that direction. We've got another 30 days, that would give me only December, and I think I need, you know, three months to get that job done correctly.
Well, it seems like within the year if we can.
Right. And I know that's not part of the council's vote, but it came up, so I just wanted to mention that I think I need a good three months to do that.
And is it better in the meantime to be able to ticket people going over 30?
I think that, that's my opinion.
Okay.
That 31 and a half? Well, I mean, I could stop them for 31, I generally, I'm gonna want to write tickets for 35.
Right.
But I could certainly stop them for 31 and enforce that. But I think generally, when you're taking tickets to court, you know, we've got to have a reasonable overage, you know, to get the judge to uphold that ticket. But certainly 35, I think, is a good ticket, if you raised it to 30 and maybe, maybe we can get the speed limit lowered after the next survey, maybe we can get it back to 25 and then still be able to enforce it at 25. Otherwise, there's still things I can do. I can put a decoy car, but those only last so long before people figure out that's just a car sitting there, and there's no camera in it, or there's no radar in it, or whatever the case may be. I mean, you've got to move it a lot, you've got to do all that kind of stuff, and you know, the more we talk about doing things like that, the more everybody in Lake County knows, chief's gonna put a decoy car there, you know, so. That's, but I'm just letting you know that those are the other options that we could do, visibility patrols and stuff like that, if the council left it at 25, but we just wouldn't, wouldn't have an effective tool for writing tickets.
Once I realized that was the decoy car there at the old D and V, I started speeding up after that.
Mr. Mayor, even if you didn't write a ticket until 35, you still has a target rich environment there.
Right, yeah. Do you need more questions of Phil?
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Phil. We may not be done with you yet.
David, this question's for you. Really, there's no, we can't augment the second reading tonight without sending it back to additional reading.
Yeah, if we make substantive changes, then we'll have to bring it back for another reading before we can, before it can be effective.
Okay. For me on this one, I don't, I'm disgusted that I even have to consider going to 30 miles per hour, because I really believe that it should be 25, and I do agree with some of the comments. It does feel like we'll be blackmailed into this position. At the same time, I don't want to take the enforcement component away from our police force, so unfortunately, this being one ordinance, I would like to, I wish right now I could just vote on all the other recommendations myself, because I'm for those. This one, I would be willing to risk the person receiving a ticket going to court. That's just my own personal opinion, meaning if they were written a ticket tomorrow for 35 miles an hour and they decided to take it to court and fight it, I'm willing to risk that. I know that puts some time both for our county court and as well as our police department without receiving any reciprocal pay for that, if they fought it and won. But I do believe that, one, we need community outreach, I think that's gonna be key. There are approximately 43 homes that are west of the main set there on 20th Street, so that would be past the open vacant area, including the north portion of Mellor, or excuse me, Willow View, not including east of that on Boggs. So, just assuming that those people, so, you know, those are the homes that are probably most likely the violators, no offense to those of you that may live up there. So, I think community outreach, I think traffic calming measures, I think we can do some things there, not only in the city, but I think the community can also, you know, I've seen the little neon, you know, kids that play with, have a flag on them, and I see those immediately in a lot of neighborhoods and other communities, and they get your attention. But, you know, at the pleasure of the council, you know, the 30 miles an hour going to it, you know, I too have concerns about if we can truly, you know, this is gonna take a community effort on this one, because it's not just gonna be tickets and traffic calming. I mean, we're gonna have to change behavior, I think that's the ultimate issue on this one, is changing the behavior of the neighborhood, and I think that's gonna be the only solution. But, you know, right now, on all of these, we're sitting in a place where we can't enforce any of the items listed in this traffic study, but, I mean, I'll work with the pleasure of the council, but I'm definitely not opposed to bringing it back and dumping this particular portion out for its own individual agenda item, but I'll leave that up to council. That's where I stand.
I think that 30 miles an hour is too fast. However, it is compelling to give our law enforcement the tools that they're going to need to follow through with the ticketing. I think that it's been made very clear through the public input and through Phil's report and our discussion, that, just like Marty says, we're gonna need a coordinated effort. I also think it's reasonable to assume that the number of complaints for that area are going to go up quickly, and it's actually my hope that if we, if we pass this ordinance, or you adopt this ordinance tonight with that 30 mile segment included, that it's gonna be temporary. That the steps that we've discussed, the traffic calming measures, the signs that visually remind people that you're coming into a neighborhood that has kids, will all serve to change people's behavior in a way such that when in March or April, when Phil thinks it's a reasonable time to return, we will have a different result, and we can change that study. But in the meantime, our law enforcement officers need that tool, because I, now that this is gonna hit our newspapers and everybody, especially the part about, you know, how we can't enforce it if it's expired, I'd like to tighten that up a little bit.
Well, I agree with both of you, like I said, and I think with a whole new generation of families down there, it's important that we bring it back, and hopefully, everyone that came out tonight will get back out on your street and talk to each other and slow each other down, and we can come back to this at the beginning of the year and slow it back down.
So, you're saying come back?
I'm just saying do a new study, but move forward with this now so that we have the ability to enforce it.
I think that this council has been really prudent in giving, through the administrative citation, whether it's solicitation ordinance, is giving the chief and his men the tools that they need to do their job, and I think this is one more case where we're just giving them the opportunity to follow through on what now they know is a problem, and I feel bad that the chief was put on the spot because he hadn't had any enforcement there, but there was no complaints. And so, you know, that wasn't, now that there's, it's out in the public, I don't even think anybody needs to complain, I think it's a given this is gonna be done, and he needs the tools, and I think that, and I totally understand what Marty's saying, but I think that doing it sooner than later, that we can start the survey again later and we can modify it, with the work of the people with the feet on the ground down there, they're the ones that are involved in it, they can make a change, and I think Tim Barnes made a very astute observation that in six months or three months, whatever it is, with the moving down, then we can change it from 31, and we can take the liberty to go down to 25, and I think that's great, and I think that's what we need to do, in my opinion.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
And I've heard a lot of good points tonight, both from staff, council, as well as the community, and I just want to capitalize on one thing Councilmember Schill said, that he's right, it is gonna take a community effort if the council makes a decision where it's gonna be 30. I could use all the help I can get from the citizens of that neighborhood to help get the word out to slow people down. That's gonna be very critical, and I know Dorina, it looks like she left, she had talked about if you wanted to go door to door, that's the kind of help I'm gonna need.
Thank you, Chief. Hard subject tonight. Do we have any other comments or any other points to be made? I wanted to thank everyone that came out tonight. I know we exited about half the room here in the last 30 minutes, but we had a lot of speakers up tonight, and obviously, when it's your backyard and your kids and your animals, you're going to take notice with that. And I do agree, feels like you're being held hostage. I know Phil does a great job, I didn't even give him the warmest welcome when he came up to the last meeting, I kind of went, oh, another traffic study, another speed study. They're frustrating. It's not, it's not his performance is frustrating, it's some of the methodology and some of the leeway for people that have been doing this job for 30, 40 years to have a little bit of flexibility with their professionalism in certain areas. They get hogtied. With that, I will bring it back to council for either a possible motion or a modification of a possible motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, along with my consensus of my fellow council members, with the understanding that it'll take a community enforcement to change behavior, and with the understanding that we will have a future study done, I would move to adopt the ordinance revising Chapter 10.16 of the Lakeport Municipal Code, Establishing Speed Zones Within the City.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are passed. Again, I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight. I hope everyone feels that they were well heard and not rushed through this. Next up, we are out of the public hearings and on to council business. Next up, we have Community Development Director Kevin, we're looking at the no parking, which I was glad to see come back after.
More traffic stuff.
Yeah, more traffic.
I'm Bevins, now that we've got a nice new road there, I'll talk to you.
Mr. Mayor, this is a complimentary piece to the speed zone that you just heard. As your body does recall, we brought to you guys a resolution to add some additional no parking area along Bevins Street on the west side, just south of the Gateway Business Park there in O'Meara's Brewery. At that time, you guys approved that change, but given some of the public comment that was made at that hearing, you directed staff to take it back to TSAC, the Traffic Safety and Advising Committee, to take a look at some opinions on extending that even further to encompass the entire frontage of the Gateway Business Park. The timing on that was pretty good because we got Phil's study, where he analyzed this section in depth, and also made that same recommendation that in his opinion, that safety was in, there were some true safety issues in allowing that on-street parking in front of the Gateway Business Park there. So, we took that back to TSAC, they reviewed it, and they made a motion and a recommendation back to your council to, once again, amend the resolution adding the entire frontage of the Gateway Business Park there, as designating that as a no parking area. There is a bus stop there, I talked with Doug, and that, the no parking, the red zone in front that has no bearing on, you know, the buses are still allowed to use that, very similar to the way they do right here on Main Street where it's a red curb area, so that won't affect the existing bus stop that's there. So, that's in a nutshell, kind of how these, this is a perfect example of how these recommendations in these speed zone studies do get taken into consideration and even implemented.
Thank you, Kevin. Speaking of streets of San Francisco, after we paved Bevins, I was heading north on Bevins, near the top of the rise, and a white Honda with one of the nice black lids came streets of San Francisco the other direction, and I thought.
Theme song playing.
So, yeah, sometimes you pave it and they will come. Counsel, do you have any questions of staff?
Kevin, it's about 10, about 10 parking spaces, is that 10, 10 to 12 total?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's probably, because when you take out the existing bus stop area there, it probably gets down to that nine or 10 range.
Okay.
One piece I didn't leave out was, we did outreach to the businesses there too and talked about this, and it actually was surprising, I mean, they were also in support, knowing that it was very dangerous as well. In talking with O'Meara's directly, they have kind of been in the habit of having their employees park there, not that they want their employees, but because those cars don't move on regular basis. That sounds bad, but mostly it's because they didn't, they didn't want a number of cars going in and out of that section where you have a number of open doors and even greater risk for the hazard.
Right.
So, you had, you had people that were very aware of the situation parking there. So, they were also in favor of this, this safety measure as well.
Yeah, I also spoke with Tim and Alex, and, yeah, I was actually surprised, you know, they were, you know, they had some concerns about busy times, but, you know, they had said, you know, rarely can someone not find a parking spot, and people are industrious, I mean, obviously, we'd never recommend parking on any other parcels lot like the extremely open and vacant old shopping center. open and vacant old shopping center lot. But most people will find their area to park...
Might need a crosswalk.
That would be wrong.
And the city, you know, we have some property that eventually I think we'll have to look at, you know, and do some additional parking where employees and staff from the industrial parks can park and open up, you know, more of the public parking. But it is, I mean, there's just not enough room there. And, you know, if a larger vehicle, any type of work truck or van is parked in one of those spots and then that same type of vehicle is traveling south down on Bevins, it really does shrink the roadway down and puts, and puts a vehicle across the line. You know, I know realignment isn't, we discussed that at length, but unfortunately, I think that it's really our only choice. And even with the bus stop, the bus stop makes it even more dangerous having cars parked there and folks opening their doors and trying to parallel park when there's traffic. So I just don't see another solution there.
Speaking about the parking there, the, one of the new businesses there, the AMCO guy, I went to see him one time and the parking lot was filled. He goes, "It's not normally like this. This is really, this is just an unusual time." But I think it's interesting that the Omeras, I think a lot of their crunch time would be when some of the other businesses are closed. And I experienced that where you go in and all the, the frontage parking is open now. So I think it's kind of a nice situation, which I think is why you didn't get so much pushback, because when Omeras needs a parking, the other people are closing down for the most part, and so it opens it up. So it's a nice little dynamic situation that works well. So, and I think it's a great recommendation.
And that's what we've seen during those hours, too. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll open this up to the public. If there's any questions or comments on the thought that we might limit the parking long street there on the subdivision, I should say subdivision.
I'm not saying anything about that. It's a great traffic study. I'm very strongly supportive of it, but I did ask some technical question on it because there's a lot of parking on it today. So although you're right, they kind of juggle, it occurs to me that the original road design was kind of flawed somewhere on there and that when the approval for Gateway was put in there, that they had X amount of parking spaces and street parking was part of that mix. So I don't really, I'm glad everyone's for it, but just in the back of my mind, I'm going, "How did it get to that point in the first place? How did we allow that street parking where the striping was so dangerous that it created that condition?" And then what does it do to the parking spaces that I guess were understood to be dedicated to Gateway at the time the project was approved, because they're going to end up shorting a good chunk of parking and they aren't going to go over to the old parking lot. So I'm glad they're supportive and I'm kind of curious what happens to their overall parking scheme.
No, and we did take that into account. We took a look at all the existing businesses there and looked back at the old staff reports for the Gateway Business Park when it went in. And there is adequate parking for all the uses with the existing parking spaces that are there without the on-street parking. When they were approved, they weren't, they were not allowed to account that on-street parking there. And it's actually funny, you kind of observe too, a lot of times when I've gone down there, you see that the on-street parking is full, but yet there's still a lot of parking spaces on that frontage area down by the new AMCO area. So I think it's just, right now, it's a matter of convenience more than it is a need. You do have some heavy uses that still generate a lot of evening folk. You have City Fitness that's in the back there, too. That, you know, requires a lot of parking. But right now, you have a mix of businesses that are, that are there that are kind of offsetting each other's peak times, which is convenient from a land use perspective. Doesn't always happen that way.
Kevin, I'm not sure. I think originally when Gateway Park came in, I don't believe that the building that Omeras is in was originally part of the initial plan. And they did have to account for parking, though. And I think the one aspect that's good is that it does offset timelines as far as the businesses that have stuff during the day and then, you know, they kind of shut down and Omeras is there. But I know when it went through the planning commission and stuff, they had to have, you know, all the required parking for all the business that was there.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments from the public or questions? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to council for more discussions or a possible motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed resolution, rescinding Resolution Number 2589, 2016, and designating the location of prohibited parking zones within the city of Lakeport.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We're good to go. You have to put on your glasses to see it. I'll take off my glasses to see it. Next up, we have Item B, which is the police chief, and we're looking at State Proposition 57. And Chief, that's you.
Well, it's been a long night. I'll try to make this a quick presentation, but basically what I'm asking the council is to consider whether or not they wish to take a vote and authorize a resolution opposing Proposition 57. Basically, what Proposition 57 has is it's a change in the parole considerations for felonies who are currently in state prison. So basically, what it's proposed to do is to grant reviews for persons who are convicted of crimes that are not listed as violent under California law. California law has two penal code sections that you need to look at to make these determinations. The first one lists what is currently violent crimes under California law, and there's about 23 of those. Then there are many other sections in the penal code where people are serving prison time that are considered serious felonies in California. That's how the law labels them. Now, the public's belief of these crimes is going to be drastically different than what the law says. The public is going to believe that these serious crimes are violent because they are in fact violent in nature. There's a long list of them, just to name a few. Rape by intoxication, rape of an unconscious person, a drive-by shooting at a residence, assault with a deadly weapon, domestic violence with injury, supplying a firearm to a gang member, discharging a firearm on school grounds, among many, many other felonies. So Proposition 57 doesn't, doesn't address these felonies under this section, which I believe is 1192.7 in the penal code. And there are about 20,000 to 30,000 people in prison right now who would be eligible for immediate release, for consideration of immediate release if the parole board wishes to do so. And all of the authority would be now granted to the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. So just to give you a quick example of how it affects people, let's say you might have an individual who has a prior serious felony conviction such as shooting at a residence. So he's been, he's been sentenced to prison, he served his time, he got out. He's been reconvicted of some other serious felony. And because of his priors and because of his history, the judge has given him certain enhancements or he's got additional violations that were also convictions, but they weren't the primary term. So, so let's say he did a violent burglary and shot at a house and did some other stuff. And then let's say he gets a four- or five-year term for the shooting at the residence and then he gets, you know, additional terms of eight months for these other crimes or other enhancements which could make his sentence like 10 years. Well, he only has to now serve for his primary offense before being considered to be let out. I think this is going too far in changing the sentencing laws because we're already dealing with the issues due to criminal justice realignment in 2011 and then Proposition 14 and, or, excuse me, Proposition 47 in 2014. So those, there are serious effects law enforcement is dealing with and I think this is going to make it worse. So that's basically a quick review of really how this proposition is going to work if it passes. And I did one last thing. I appreciate, we have Chief Sully here from Clearlake Police Department. Just want to mention, I went to his council meeting last week because Clearlake's considered a similar vote. And also, about a week and a half ago, our Lake County Law Enforcement Chiefs Association came out with a public press release in opposition to Proposition 57 because we don't believe it will make our community in Lake County any safer and we believe it'll let, bring dangerous felons back into our communities earlier. So thank you.
First off, David, was I okay with my boo at the beginning? I mean, that was a personal opinion. I can do that, right? Boo, fifty-seven, okay? I just want to make sure. You know, I got...
I think that's the intent of the resolution.
Yeah. Boo, okay? I'll make sure. Overstepping my bounds. Do we have any questions?
Well, I have some interesting comments. I've been known to do rehabilitation projects at my store with people that have come from a questionable background. And I have one rehabilitation project right now who recently spent a lot of time, he spent most of his adult life in prison and his dad has been in and out of prison his entire life. I know that Chief probably knows him, but the thing that I thought was very illustrative of the damage and I, this is, I have to tell you, it's incomprehensible to me that the state or the feds or whoever are releasing the prisoners are dumping this problem onto cities and counties all over the state. It's incomprehensible to me that they're doing this. And let me give you an example. He was in the Sonoma County Jail. The way I understood it was 1,200 people are in the main jail, 300 at the ranch. Okay, they had a Proposition 47 advocate come out, lawyer I'm sure, came out and explained all of the felonies that are now no longer felonies. You can shoplift four times, the fifth time, it's a felony. Now it's no longer a felony. Now you can just, you know, ad nauseam, go in and out of Safeway, take a shopping cart loads day after day, get arrested, it's never a felony. Well, what happened after this, after the education section where all of these criminals who are already teaching each other the fine details of criminal activity, B and Es and everything else, they're teaching each other, matter of fact, one of his associates said, "I'm going to college. I'm going to learn how to be a better criminal. I'm going to the county jail." And it's not without merit. Well, what happened on the heels of this, and Chief knows this only too well, 1,200 and 300, 600 people were released, almost half of the population to be distributed in cities all over Northern California where they were previously arrested or however that goes down. It is incomprehensible to me that the state can save money on the backs of individual cities like ours having to augment their police force when people now are crying more than ever about police protection and public safety and they're dumping it on us trying to save money. This is unexcusable. But see, you can't go to the governor and raise hell like you can here and get some action. It's never going to happen. Now 57 is just further augmentation to the same exact reprehensible behavior that is, "I can't believe anybody who calls themselves a legislature could ever vote on something in favor of this after what they've already done, crippling police forces all over the state and all over, you know, the areas." And property crimes were going down before this happened. To save money, you cut loose prisoners of all these, and what are we going to do about it? I called Chief the other day and talked about the shoplifting is rampant. They're not even touching them at Safeway, they're not touching them at Kmart. I understand $295,000 was quoted to the chief from me, I mean, he told me that the lost person over there, the, whatever they call, the lost expert at Kmart alone in this town, $25,000 a month, $6,000 a week being shoplifted out there. Why? There's no consequences. You can shoplift till the cows come home, it's never a felony. Where does it end? While I was on the phone with Chief, cars were broken into at the Soper Reese because we don't have the tools to put these people back in jail because they're no longer felons. This is just more of the same exact activity. People need to understand 47 and 57 have dire consequences for small communities like ours. And this is just, I cannot believe that the governor and any of the people in the city and state legislature could ever let something like this happen and dump all these problems on the individual cities.
Kenny is now your spokesman.
Let's take him do a knock-in.
So, that's how I feel about it.
Glad you should have come.
It's easy when I say, "What do you really..."
Just tell it like it is, okay?
Any other comments or... Okay, I'm going to open this up to the public. Do you have any comments or questions about us possibly opposing this Prop 57? Chief, come on down. Clearlake just recently did the same thing, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, thank you for this consideration. I'm here to support Chief Raskin in this venture. I think it's worthwhile that we take our communities back. It's obvious that your citizens are very passionate about their public safety and this is right along those lines. And our city council and City Clearlake did adopt a resolution to oppose Prop 57. I'm very proud of that. And I think you should do the same. I think this proposition will not make our community safer. And the title of it should be suspect, Public Safety and Rehabilitation Act of 2016. There's nothing that's going to increase our public safety by allowing prisoners and dangerous felons back into our communities. Thank you.
The title is very similar to the other two that...
Absolutely. Thanks, Chief.
Chief? You safe out there? I hope your department's safe also. Any other members of the public would like to comment? Come on, yeah.
Thanks for letting me speak tonight. I'm here...
Can I get, I know your name, David.
Yeah, Michael Froyo. No pen or pencil was stolen here.
That's right. You don't actually have...
As long as we get it on there.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to say that two weeks ago I was here, I'm sure everybody here remembers me. Since I've seen you last, I've gotten a lot of help. Helps come, it's begun. I feel bad for the people on 20th and how much time was spent on their problem. What they don't know is that we've got other problems and the chief's been putting a lot of officers in our neighborhood. It feels good, I had a meeting with Kevin Ingram yesterday. We're making what I feel is great progress. Had a meeting that we had this weekend, the chief's come out a couple of times to talk to our Neighborhood Watch group. And he has used the opportunity to share with the members in our group what 57 is all about and had, you know, I wanted to come out in favor of opposing the city council, opposing publicly 57 because it's deceptive and it's bad for our small community. But the more you look into it, the more you'll see. I also wanted to take a second here just to be sure that I appreciated your time two weeks ago and I feel like I'm getting a lot of help in our neighborhood. Things are happening. They're not done. We have a long ways to go, but I'm getting a lot of help. Thank you.
Michael, I just wanted to say too, I know that I said that I would, you know, sit in on any of those meetings. I know you set those up for Sundays.
We'd love to have you.
I know, I know, but the only thing I wanted to say was I wasn't sure if the chief filled you in. You know my wife, where she worked.
Yeah.
She works Saturdays, we only have Sundays together. I never schedule anything on a Sunday, only because I get 26 Sundays with my wife and that's the only days we get together as a full day. If you guys schedule any other days, just please let me know. Or if you want me to come out on another day, even to meet with a few of you if it will help, just not a Sunday.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I've talked to the sheriff, Brian Martin, and he feels the same way, Sundays are a little hard for him to make. We'll try to set up another day where maybe we can invite folks if you want to...
Email me and let me know or let the chief know and he'll let me know. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you do that.
That'd be great. We look forward to having you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? Team, no? I'll bring it back to council for a possible motion.
I'll just add a comment before we get to that. I've spoken to Sheriff Tom Almond, Mendocino County Sheriff, of course, Sheriff Martin here in Lake County. And, you know, they vehemently oppose Prop 57. In fact, in speaking to some of our colleagues, fellow council members in Cloverdale, one being a retired police officer, Joe Paula, he as well...
Do you need to go, Doug?
Yes.
Can I, Doug?
Can I?
Yeah, I just, I just got the nixal, yeah, yeah.
Nick Doug.
Well, he's not going to have a night. He's going to have a long night, Doug.
Let me know if you need something, Doug.
Yeah, I will.
But I think the consensus amongst any law enforcement official, both in the prosecution side, to the incarceration side, to the actual enforcement side, after AB 109, Prop 47, this would just be basically the final...
this would just be basically the final straw, and it would break the camel's back, and it would, you know, small communities definitely can't deal with this. The League of California Cities, those that I've spoken with through our division, as well as the state as a whole vehemently opposes Proposition 57. So frankly, I can't find, I can't find anybody within my resources, constituent group, amongst our same cities and my colleagues in other councils that support this in any way, shape, or form. So I will be vehemently opposing it myself.
I told both my sons that they would be out of the house if they wanted. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt the proposed resolution opposing Prop 57, the Public Safety and Rehabilitation Act.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Chief, I'd like to thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Travel safe.
Thanks, Chief. And Mayor, if I may, I know normally it takes a while to get these resolutions signed, but if it'd be possible to get that tomorrow, I'd like to get it sent on to the appropriate people.
Done deal. Usually Hillary sends me an email, and I'll run over here and get it signed.
Thank you.
Done deal. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Last up, we have Communications. Jenny?
I jumped right over to you. Go first. All right. I have a couple things I wanted to share. The Finance Department has been working really hard on monitoring our TOT, which is the tax that is paid when less than 30 days are spent in a hotel, and we've made some significant collections of past due TOT. So that's, that's great for the general fund. I've mentioned a couple times that we're prepping for the auditors, and the auditors will be here the week of November 14, so that'll be a busy week for the department. And lastly, this is not specifically related to our department, but we have a very industrious intern in the Finance Department who started a new business, and I just wanted to share a little bit about that new business with you. The business is on Main Street. It's called The Nerd Cave. Tony is the business owner. And they're open Monday through Thursday, 12:30 to 9:00. They have varying hours, but basically Monday through Thursday, and then Saturday and Sunday. And it's just a really interesting idea. It creates an opportunity to, for kids to get off the street and do some fun things. They sell all kinds of non-electronic type games. So, a new business. Thank you.
We're also open 12:30 to 12:30 on Fridays.
That concludes my report and my advertisement.
How do you follow that up, David?
You've got no report.
Chief, anything else?
Just real quick, I spent about 12 hours yesterday working on the Columbus Kids' Halloween Fair, so hopefully nobody missed me here, but just wanted to mention a very positive event. We had 1,541 community members in attendance, so it was great. It was 41% increase over last year.
Wow. That's awesome.
Kevin?
Well, since Mr. Greider's runoff to go take care of that, I will steal in on his thunder there, and just, I know that the council was informed, but I just wanted to let the public know. We're very excited to announce that the city was informed earlier yesterday that we did receive our active transportation plan grant for some sidewalk and traffic calming improvements to the Hartley Road project there between 20th and the city limits. So we're very excited about getting that project moving forward.
Thank you, Kevin. Again, 1.8 million, thanks, thank you. And again, I know that's not, like, we talked about, it's not just you, it's not just your, your, our.
No, Phil, who was sitting here with Lake Gateway City.
But you've got Phil on here. He spent a lot of time creative writing for that.
And a special thanks also to the county, specifically Todd Mansell over there in their engineering department assisted us out greatly, too, in putting that together rather quickly.
Thank you, Brian. Hillary? Nothing? Okay. Councilwoman Turner?
Two things. Next week, I will travel to Long Beach, Newport Beach, for the League of California Cities League Leaders Orientation and Strategic Planning Workshop. I've been appointed first vice president of the Redwood League Division, and so I get to go learn what that means. And then my second thing is I just wanted to thank my parents for coming to the city council meeting. They're visiting from Portland.
Oh.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You know, we were all wondering who you were back.
Not really.
No. Councilwoman Parlet?
Well, last week, I spent considerable time in preparation for a meeting with Ken Sederlin, because I'm trying to get, he's been mistreated over the years before our regime came in, and I'm trying to, you know, break the ground and try and form a positive relationship, although I don't know that he did it any good tonight, but with all the requests. But nevertheless, during that period of time, I had a chance to review the past number of years and all the accomplishments of the city of Lakeport in great detail, and I got a chance to finally listen to Mayor Shields' comments when he was mayor, and I listened to those. I went over the budget story that Dan Buffalo put together, and a lot of the public information that we put out at the various National Nights Out, and how well we were doing spending the money. And I have to say that I was more than a little proud of all the accomplishments we've had each and every year, and I feel really good about being up here with you guys, and want to congratulate Maria on your appointment to the National, you know, to the League Cities, and Martin, the outgoing president, congratulations, too. But I think we've been one heck of a team, and I know we're not going to be together much longer, but we've done a heck of a job, and I must say, it really highlighted it when I went through all those details, and you've done a magnificent job. Congratulations to you all.
Kudos, good team. Councilman Shield?
I would just like to echo, congrats, to Councilmember Turner on her first vice president position, and a year from now, she will be president, as I am right now. So definitely, the League does wonderful things for cities of California, and leadership conference is excellent. You're really going to enjoy it. You're going to get a lot done there. November 3rd, next week, your most important right, one of them, vote, everyone, regardless of how you're voting, make sure you vote. And of course, the 11th Friday is Veterans Day, one of the most important days that we have out here, so please observe that in honor of all of our veterans. I felt that, I have nothing more.
For two?
Well, our division meeting's coming up in Ukiah. Is it on the 18th?
18th.
So I hope everyone can go to that, so we can congratulate Martin on a good year, and install him as the first vice president. So very exciting. And Kenny, I've been reflecting, too, on the years as we come up to this election, and it has been, we have gotten so much done in the last four years, so, and staff, I mean, not just council staff, it's been amazing. So thank you, everyone.
Long meeting. I'm going to let everyone off the hook. I just wanted to echo what Jenny said, which was, I've had a number of positive comments about Tony's location down there, and people have seen late at night kids down there hanging out, having a good time in a nice environment, and just wanted to say, that sounds like a cool thing.
And Mr. Mayor, real quick, for those of you that aren't on Nixol, stay away from North Forbes between 7th and 8th for the next several hours.
But it'll all be okay soon.
It's a water line.
There we go.